Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved. First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegachounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the "Register" button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the "in-person" option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit "Register," and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
On the ninth, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting to Order, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are one example of a community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land nature and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States, from four cultural groups. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Chair Portem Aguirre.
Here.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stupp.
Here.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. We will now have Father Neil Jose Wilkinson deliver the invocation, and Miguel Marin lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Good morning. Loving God, source of truth, justice, and compassion, we come before you asking you to send your spirit on the proceedings of the county board. We ask that you inspire them to act with compassion, with good judgment, paying attention to all people, especially the children who need to be defended and need to be protected. We pray for respect for the human rights of all immigrants, of all people in this county. We ask for your direction on these proceedings. We ask that the proceedings may go forward with respect for all involved. And we ask your inspiration and your courage for all of the supervisors in the difficult decisions which need to be made. I pray in the name of Jesus, remembering all the great souls who've gone before us. We believe that they pray with us and pray for us and hold us. Amen.
Good morning. If you could please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We now proceed with the Proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by myself honoring the 175th anniversary of California statehood. Accepting the proclamation will be Maurice Lyles.
Good morning. California is turning 175 today. 175 years ago, California adopted its first constitution. We outlawed slavery, recognized women's rights to own property, and established public education. Bold stance for freedom at a time when our nation was deeply divided. And today, California is the fifth-largest economy in the world. We led the way on clean energy, expanded paid family leave, and universal pre-K, all while Washington has stalled. When the federal government will not act, California does. Here in San Diego, we're proving what that looks like. Breakthroughs in lifesaving science, leadership on climate, and the busiest border crossing in the Western Hemisphere. We don't just imagine a better future, we build it. As a mom raising a kindergartner here, I think about what California will look like when she's my age. The best way to honor 175 years of progress is to keep pushing and keep fighting, to leave her a state that is more just, more sustainable, and more free. So happy birthday, California. Here's to 175 years of leading the nation forward and to the next 175 of showing what's possible. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this ninth day of September 2025 that we commend the State of California for outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the residents of San Diego County and the State of California, and to hereby declare this day to be California's 175th, 175th Anniversary of Statehood Day throughout San Diego County.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer and to the County Board of Supervisors for this proclamation. On behalf of the Governor Gavin Newsom, I'm honored to accept this proclamation celebrating California's 175th anniversary. I'm Maurice Lyles. I'm the Southern California Director for Governor Gavin Newsom. From the earliest indigenous peoples who have called this land home for thousands of years to the diverse generations who have built our state into the now-fourth-largest economy recently so we're going in the world, California has always been a place of resilience, innovation, and hope. San Diego County is deeply woven into this story. Long before statehood, the Kumeyaí people nurtured this region with enduring strength and culture. Later, in 1769, San Diego became the site of California's first mission and presidio, marking the beginning of a chapter that would eventually lead to statehood in 1850. Today, San Diego continues to shape our future, from groundbreaking discoveries at our universities and biotech companies to proud service members in the Marines and Navy stationed at Camp Pendleton and the largest naval base on the West Coast. This milestone reminds us not only of our long history, but also responsibility, the responsibility we share to keep building a future that is more inclusive, sustainable, and full of opportunity for all Californians to grow and thrive. As we look to the next 175th, may we continue to lead with courage, creativity, and compassion. Thank you for joining in this celebration of the Golden State's 175th remarkable journey. Thank you.
The second proclamation will be given by myself and Vice Chair Montgomery Stupp honoring the County of San Diego Teacher, Teachers of the Year. Accepting the proclamation will be Dr. Gloria Ceriza.
Hi. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for having us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good morning. As a parent who just dropped my daughter off at school this morning, I felt both joy and nerves. Every parent knows that mix of emotions, and we also know how much it matters to have teachers we can trust, those who make our kids feel safe, curious, and ready to learn. I am especially grateful for her teachers. They are the steady hands and open hearts who make the morning moments a little easier and a lot more exciting for every child. So that's why it is such an honor to celebrate our 2025 to 2026 San Diego County Teachers of the Year. These five educators represent the very best of what teaching can be. Greg Hinchcliffe, Bonzel High School; Miguel Marin, Granger Junior High School; Karina Martinez, Pioneer Elementary School; Allison Schmidt, Solana Pacific Elementary School; Kevin White, Deportola Middle School. And we are especially proud to recognize Christine Leprell from Grossmont High School, one of just five Teachers of the Year across California. Since 1974, nearly 200 educators have been named County Teacher of the Year, and many have gone on to be recognized as the best in California and even the best in the nation. To today's honorees, thank you. Thank you for believing in your students, for lifting them up, and for giving families like mine the joy of seeing our kids light up with possibility. I'd like to hand the floor to my colleague.
Thank you so much, and good morning, everyone. It is such an honor to stand here today to recognize and celebrate our San Diego County Teachers of the Year. Let me be the second to say congratulations for being recognized, not only, not only for the excellence that you bring to the classroom, but for the countless ways that you serve beyond the classroom. Those of us who know the heart of education understand that the title "teacher" carries so much more than just someone who goes over lesson plans and grades assignments. The individuals being honored with us today have demonstrated their full commitment to our future leaders and showing up every single day with purpose. Teachers are often counselors, advocates, mediators, mentors, and lifelines for our young people. They show up early and they stay late. They buy supplies out of their own pockets. They carry their students' stories long after the last day of class before summer begins. And most of the most powerful and transformative work they do is often unseen. Many may not know the extra time spent checking in with a student in crisis, or the late-night grading, or the weekends spent reworking a lesson to reach just one more student. But today, I am very proud to shine a light on that labor of love that you've demonstrated as educators. To our Teachers of the Year, you embody what it means to serve with heart and are some of the most resilient leaders of our society. Thank you for doing the work that rarely gets the recognition, but always makes the difference. Congratulations again. And with that, I'll turn it back over to our chair.
So now, therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this ninth day of September 2025 that we commend the 2025-2026 San Diego County Teachers of the Year for outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and to hereby declare this day to be 25-26 San Diego County Teachers of the Year Day throughout San Diego County.
Wow, amazing. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer. That was beautiful. And Vice Chair Montgomery Stupp, thank you for those beautiful words. And to Chair Portem Aguirre and members of the Board, members of the public. I'm Dr. Gloria Ceriza. I am the proud, proud San Diego County Superintendent of Schools. Thank you. Each year, we do this. Each year, we have the great privilege of naming five of the more than 20,000 educators here in San Diego as County Teachers of the Year. These incredible teachers represent, as was shared earlier, the heart and the soul of dedicated educators across our region and our county. They show up every day, especially in times like right now. They inspire our students to learn and to grow and to believe in themselves and to create spaces where every child feels connected and like they belong. The difference they make in the lives of students is immeasurable. And their impact reaches, as was shared, far greater than the classroom, shaping brighter futures and reminding all of us why teaching is such an important role in our communities. So I'm thrilled to introduce again Greg Hinchcliffe from Bonzel High School, Bonzel Unified School District, and Miguel Marin from Granger Junior High School from the Sweetwater Unified School District, who did the Pledge of Allegiance for us this morning; Karina Martinez from Pioneer Elementary School District in Escondido; Allison Schmidt from Solana Pacific Elementary School, Solana Beach; and Kevin White from Deportola Middle School in the San Diego Unified School District. And also Kristin, I cannot forget to recognize and to honor you. Kristin was selected as one, there are almost, there are over 300,000 teachers in California. Kristin was one of five in the entire state of California that was recognized as a State Teacher of the Year for California. So Kristin, congratulations. Kristin. Kristin teaches mathematics and AP Calculus at Grossmont High School and has demonstrated again and again deep, deep dedication and ingenuity in building groundbreaking math programming for our students here in San Diego County. On behalf of the San Diego County Office of Education and the teachers who stand here proudly with me at this podium, we are so grateful for this proclamation and the recognition of the vital work of educators all throughout our region. Thank you.
Can we get a photo?
Yep. Thank you.
Me? No, no. Everyone. Even. One more.
One more, one more. Thank you, thank you.
One, one. Beautiful. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The third proclamation will be given by Vice Chair Montgomery Step honoring San Diego Hunger Awareness Month. Accepting the proclamation will be the San Diego Hunger Coalition and the Jacobson-Cushman San Diego Food Bank.
Good morning again, everyone. So I'm proud to present a proclamation recognizing September as Hunger Awareness Month, a time when we uplift the concerns and acknowledge the impact on families and individuals who face hunger every day. I want to begin by recognizing the Jacobson-Cushman San Diego Food Bank and the San Diego Hunger Coalition for your unwavering commitment to food and nutrition justice. If there are organizations that truly take our region's hunger crisis seriously, you are on the front lines of doing that work. I want to thank you for continuing not just the conversation, but the urgency for us to act. As we observe Hunger Awareness Month, it serves as a timely reminder of the challenges our nation faces, especially with looming cuts to CalFresh funding and the increasing burdens placed on our families who need support the most. I'm proud to stand with these organizations as they prepare to address the ripple effects that touch every corner of our community. When a person is forced to spend every waking moment worrying about where their next meal will come from, their opportunities to thrive are threatened, and too often, those opportunities are diminished. As a county and as a society, we tend to be reactive in how we address problems, and unfortunately, it's no different when it comes to nutrition insecurity and the health outcomes of our residents. It is not acceptable to allow so many of our seniors, our youth, and our vulnerable populations to fall through the cracks of our food system. We must ensure that individuals and families are not left behind and that they have access to the programs and the support that they need. As a county supervisor, I'm proud to be a strong advocate for closing these service gaps. This year, we brought forward an item to the Board of Supervisors to close funding gaps for both the San Diego Food Bank and the Imperial Beach Sun Coast Co-op in an effort to focus on improving access to healthy food in the communities most impacted. This item passed unanimously at the board, and it reflects our shared commitment to ensuring no one in our region goes hungry. Even as the very real threats from the HR-1 legislation inch closer to becoming reality, we are met with an opportunity to implement proactive solutions for the health challenges our residents face. We still have a long way to go, but my work and commitment go far beyond a single board item. This is an ongoing effort to increase access to the critical resources that will help close the hunger gap and end the cycle of poverty that too often accompanies it. Recognizing this month is about doubling down on our commitment to ensure that every person has the chance to live with dignity and with purpose. For decades, community organizations and local initiatives have led the way in expanding food access. Now it's time to reimagine food systems that work for all people. So thank you again for your work. And with that, I'll just, I'll read the last line of the proclamation and then turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, they're here too, so I don't have to pick that up.
Be it proclaimed by all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this ninth day of September 2025, that we commend the Jacobson-Cushman San Diego Food Bank and the San Diego Hunger Coalition for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this month to be San Diego Hunger Awareness Month throughout San Diego County. Thank you, and we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. My name is Casey Castillo. I'm CEO of the Jacobson-Cushman San Diego Food Bank. First, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Supervisor Montgomery Step for this proclamation recognizing September as Hunger Awareness Month in the County of San Diego. Hunger hides in plain sight, and the consequences of not investing in solutions affect us all. A recent study conducted by San Diego State for us found that the primary need for our services is a direct result of rising costs. Seventy-six percent of respondents cited this as the reason for visiting the food bank, with 45% of respondents adding that they just don't receive enough income to manage costs in our region. Last fiscal year, the San Diego Food Bank distributed 53 million pounds of food and other resources equivalent to 44 million meals. Serving as a food safety net for more than 400,000 people each month requires many impactful partnerships, and I want to thank county staff and the entire Board of Supervisors for your incredible support, especially for the historic $500,000 grant for us earlier this year. That came in response to unexpected canceled food deliveries from federal government-sponsored food assistance programs that we administer. With this action, the County of San Diego helped the food bank fill critical gaps by supplementing our neighborhood distributions and mobile pantries with staple items such as proteins, grains, dairy, and ready-to-eat meals. This investment is more important than ever, as more than 100,000 CalFresh recipients may be impacted by HR-1 and its changes to the SNAP program. We know the path forward. To meet this challenge requires collaboration, and we are committed to working together with the county to find innovative solutions to keep people enrolled on CalFresh, which is our best tool to fight hunger. I also today would like to publicly thank our 450 nonprofit partner, distribution partners, our amazing 16,000 volunteers, our dedicated Board of Directors, and all the incredible generous donors who support our programs and services each and every month. And finally, a special shout out to Alondra Alvarado and her team at the Hunger Coalition for partnering with us on Hunger Awareness Month. Thank you again for this recognition. Your support and collaboration helps ensure our ability to assist thousands of families, veterans, military families, and seniors in this county each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Supervisor Montgomery Step. My name is Alondra Alvarado. I am the President and CEO of San Diego Hunger Coalition, and on behalf of my organization and our 500 partners, including the food bank, one of the strongest partners in our network, I'm honored to receive this proclamation naming September 2025 as Hunger Awareness Month. This recognition shines a light on the one in four San Diegans who are experiencing hunger, according to our data, and affirms that addressing this crisis is a shared responsibility. Right now, federal cuts to SNAP could remove 67,000 neighbors from the program, stripping 264 million from our local economy. At the same time, our data shows 175,000 San Diegans are still eligible for CalFresh but not enrolled. With a county-wide meal gap of 7 million meals, we are working with our partners to identify every food source and connect it to the people who need it the most. Our hunger relief sector is working very hard, coordinating across food banks, pantries, schools, and community organizations to maximize impact and ensure no food assistance goes unused. Thank you, Vice Chair Supervisor Montgomery and members of the board, for your leadership in bringing visibility to hunger and for this proclamation. Together, we can protect food assistance under threat, close the meal gap, and move toward a hunger-free San Diego.
Okay. Thank you all. The fourth proclamation will be given by Chair Protam Aguirre honoring Dr. Prather and Dr. Stigler-Grenados. Accepting the proclamation will be Dr. Prather and Dr. Stigler-Grenados.
Right. Well, I am incredibly honored to be standing with these two incredible women who individually and together along with their teams have contributed so much to what we know about the impacts to the air, water, and soil, and the public health impacts we know to be true when it comes to the Tijuana River sewage crisis. Dr. Kim Prather is a distinguished atmospheric chemist and professor at the Scripps Institution of Oceanography and the Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry at the University of California San Diego. She has been at the forefront of studying the environmental and health impacts of pollution emanating from the Tijuana River. Together with her team, has led groundbreaking air quality measurements and modeling that revealed how untreated wastewater, industrial waste, and urban runoff entering the ocean, as well as a hotspot on the Tijuana River identified through community input, became airborne as aerosols and toxic gases establishing for the first time a direct connection between the polluted river water and poor air quality across San Diego County. Her research team has documented the dangerously high levels of hydrogen sulfide, which have reached 45 parts per billion, thousands of times higher than typical urban air posing severe health risks and confirming the longstanding concerns of residents near the river. Dr. Paula Stigler-Grenados, Associate Professor and Head of Environmental Health at San Diego State University, has been at the forefront of studying the Tijuana River pollution crisis, a cross-border environmental and public health issue affecting communities in San Diego County and Tijuana, Mexico. Together with her research team, she has led the public health response by engaging directly with residents, conducting health surveys, coordinating with local community-based organizations, and documenting how exposure to polluted air impacts the well-being of South Bay communities. Doctors Prather and Stigler-Grenados, alongside their teams, worked closely with the community and by listening to residents' concerns and collaborating with them, connecting lived experiences with scientific findings and ensuring results were shared with the public and policymakers. This collaboration brought together atmospheric chemistry and public health surveys, creating the first holistic picture of how cross-border pollution moves through air and water affecting daily life. Their work is directly informing science-based decision-making and policy at multiple levels of government, helping turn research into solutions and coordinated action addressing this decades-long crisis. Their leadership has brought national attention to the lived experiences of South Bay residents, elevating community voices, and advancing environmental justice in a region that is so disproportionately burdened by this cross-border pollution. So it is my great pleasure and honor to now say that therefore, be it proclaimed by Chair Tara Lawson-Reimer and all members of the San Diego Board of Supervisors on this ninth day of September 2025, that they commend Dr. Kimberly Prather and Dr. Paula Stigler-Grenados for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this day to be Dr. Kimberly Prather and Dr. Paula Stigler-Grenados' Day throughout San Diego County.
Okay. Well, I'll try and say something intelligible. This is a great, great honor, and first of all, I'd like to thank you, Supervisor Aguirre, and the rest of the supervisors, and everybody else who's helped make this possible. I mean, it is a, was a massive team effort, and of course Paula. Like, it has just been, I could go on and on with the names, including the names, as was mentioned, the people in the community. Without the community's input, we wouldn't have had the impact that we had. We would not have done the science that we did. They gave us all kinds of advice, and we listened, and that turned out to be really, really important. I basically, you know, it's shocking to me that, it's ironic, it was one year ago today, if you remember this, that at that time, Mayor Aguirre said, "Let's have a press conference and show, you know, show what you're measuring." And I was completely a bit naive at that point about what that all was going to entail. But it was a wild ride over the last year, I will say that. But in the end, you know, we published a paper that just came out at the end of August in Science, so it's got the gold stamp of approval now. And it always had the gold stamp of approval. It had the voices, and that's basically all we did. We just validated what the people had been saying all along and being ignored. And so I am very, I don't know, it's my most rewarding project of my entire 33-year career to have been able to take basic science and actually help people that needed help. They should not be breathing this air. We're not done. I would love to say we are. We're going to keep fighting. We're going to keep doing our measurements. We haven't stopped, and we're not going to stop. And, you know, now hydrogen sulfide is low. The smells are down, but the air is still not anything that anybody should be breathing. We were just there last week, and I was there for about 20 minutes and had a massive headache when I left. There's, hydrogen sulfide in some weird way was doing us a favor because it stinks, so you get out of there. Whereas, you know, now there's these other gases, toxic gases, there's over 1,000 different toxic gas, or just different gases that are in the air, and they're still there. And so we need to protect the people. Nobody, nobody should be breathing the air that's down there. So I look forward to working with everyone to help fix this problem. And so finally, just thank you so much for this recognition. I'm very deeply honored. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Please reminding folks to be respectful in the chamber. Thank you.
Well, hi. I just want to echo what Dr. Prather said and just say that, you know, this has been a deeply, I don't know, just a deep experience for all of us. I, I can't think enough, my team, especially my mentor, Dr. Quintana, who's here in the audience with me, and especially my family, who have my husband here, and my daughter, who didn't want to come up, but she's being shy. They were in the trenches too, donning respirators, going out while mommy had to go take samples, and we didn't have a babysitter. And, you know, it's nothing compared to though what the community has endured. I know, I'm grateful again to my husband for helping take care of me when I got sick after being at the hotspot for too long. So this is a reality for our community, and especially our community-based organizations. So I see a few of you here, Mar de Colores, and our Border Pollution Coalition, you guys are out there fighting this every day. So this is for you, and this is for the community, and this is for forward progress. This is a whole different story a year ago today, and so I'm proud to be here to take this recognition, but this is really for the community. And again, we have so much more to do, and I hope we keep fighting to get this air clean and the water clean, because this has gone on for far too long. So thank you.
The final proclamation will be given by Supervisor Jim Desmond honoring Operation Hope North County. Accepting the proclamation will be Esperanza Zapico.
Take care of him. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome. It is my honor today to recognize the exceptional and lasting impact of Operation Hope North County. We greatly appreciate Esperanza Zapico and her incredible team here today for being here and driving all the way down from Vista. There was an accident on the five, wasn't there? Okay, we all enjoyed that. But anyway, since 2003, this organization has been a beacon of hope for those experiencing homelessness, offering not just shelter, but safety, support, and dignity. Their unique model, which I toured several years ago, but I'm sure it's just as good as it was then, this organization has been a beacon of hope for those experiencing homelessness, offering not just shelter, but safety, support, and dignity. Their unique, I already said that, unique model, though, includes private family rooms and shared spaces for single women, men, and families. Operation Hope provides a drug- and alcohol-free environment where people can begin to heal and rebuild. Their commitment goes beyond housing, though. They're connecting individuals with vital resources, services, and support to help them thrive long after they leave. Their programs, they can last up to 90 days, which actually gives residents time to regain stability and hopefully independence. At the heart of Operation Hope, there are their volunteers, many volunteers, whose dedication actually creates a deep sense of community, not just in Vista, but in all of North County, and the care and enrichment at every life they touch. And none of this would be possible without the generosity of donors, supporters, whose belief in their mission powers real change. And I'm proud to have supported this incredible work through the county grant program, helping us all move closer to a future where homelessness is no longer a life sentence, but a challenge we can overcome together. So today, we celebrate Operation Hope North County, their staff, their volunteers, their donors, their residents, for their life-changing work and unwavering compassion. We need more organizations like this that provide drug-free, alcohol-free environments for people to heal. So thank you for improving lives and building a better, a brighter, and more secure future for our community. So whereas the county of San Diego is committed to recognizing and honoring those organizations who are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, and Operation Hope North County is one such worthy organization. So therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this ninth day of September 2025, that we commend Operation Hope North County for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the cities, to the citizens of San Diego County, and to hereby proclaim today to be Operation Hope North County Day throughout San Diego County. Congratulations, Esperanza. You want to come up and make a few remarks? Here you are, you're hiding. Thank you. Thank you very much. Give him a hand. Thank you very much. All right. Let you speak first.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Esperanza, and I proudly serve as the Executive Director at Operation Hope North County. I want to start this moment with some gratitude here for the incredible women behind me that are part of our staff and our staff that could not be here today. We have our Director of Resource Development, Evelyn Flores, our Program Director, Lena Soto-Thomas, our Shelter Manager, Stephanie Matos, our Administrative Assistant, Patricia Diaz, and our amazing Case Manager, Sonia Cortez. And we could not do this work without the hard-working staff that are the heart of our organization and all the staff that can't be here with us today. So I really wanted to start by recognizing their hard work and dedication to our mission. I would also like to acknowledge our board, who are not here today, but always here in spirit. We have such great leadership and could not do it without our incredible Board of Directors, and also our incredible volunteers that serve our clients and our community. We are such an organization that prides ourselves on volunteerism and community impact, and we literally could not do it without our incredible supporters. So thank you so much to everyone who supports our work. It is truly a community effort. We are incredibly honored to be recognized with this proclamation. Thank you to Supervisor Jim Desmond and the County Board of Supervisors for this esteemed recognition. We have been proudly serving the community since 2003, and we are one of the very few family shelters that focus on providing safe shelter and comprehensive services for families, serving thousands since our inception. At Operation Hope North County, we are not just a shelter. We are a bridge, a bridge from crisis to stability, from isolation to connection, from surviving to truly thriving. Every day, families walk through our doors carrying heavy burdens, trauma, fear, uncertainty. But what they find is more than roof and walls. They find a team ready to walk alongside them with compassion, with dignity, and with real tools for change. In the past year alone, we've supported more than 50 families, about 150 individuals, over 60% of them being children. We've walked alongside moms fleeing domestic violence. We've held newborns and their mothers. We've stood by single fathers grieving children and individuals working to heal from trauma, addiction, and cycles of poverty and discrimination. Each of them is doing the brave, daily work of rebuilding. They are not just numbers. They're stories of perseverance. And we know this. One stable parent can uplift generations. One safe night can change a future. One child's stability can rewrite an entire family's future. This proclamation is not just a recognition of our work. It is a promise, a promise that in San Diego, no family will walk alone. Together, we will keep building bridges of hope, lighting the way from struggle to strength. We invite you to walk alongside us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not items on the meeting agenda. The only action the board may take is a referral to the CIO. Under the board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public comment, either at today's general legislative session or tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not at both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address at the board at their own convenience. To better facilitate the meeting, for non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person and five speakers by phone. To ensure fairness, the first five in-person speakers for non-agenda public comment are now randomly selected. The rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. As a reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation systems receive twice the allotted time for their comments. And as a final reminder, according to the board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the proceedings, you will be given one warning. After that warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 18 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, eight in person, and 10 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial in with the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, and we'll now randomly select the first five individuals to speak at today's session this morning. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. The first five individuals this morning will be Caesar Javier, Ilka Weston, Mark Flower Alvarez Lopez, and Jennifer Lotero. If I've called your name, please come forward.
We have been pleading that we would speak together, but the electronic system you have created bars it from us together.
I called your name, you can come forward and provide your comments. We also have a request for Parita Javier, but she'll be heard this afternoon. She was not part of the first five that we called this morning. So please go ahead with your comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Stip, my fellow citizen, remember this? You heard the feedbacks from the community, the professionals, the educated. And this is all along justice for all, not only for the rich, but for the poorest. Our community issue has to be defended, and the family Javier has to walk the walk, inform our residents, there is toxicity in our neighborhood neighbors. Toxicity. It's not only hydrogen sulfide, but carbonization in general, because their pollution control district, where Reimer, Citizen Reimer, is a member of the governing board, including the mayor and Mr. Rivera, Citizen. You know why they did not allow me to be a member of that governing board? Because I know what is toxicity. Why did they bar it? My volunteerism, representing 74 of the signatory people in our community to address this issue. This is in our constitution. Citizen Stip, you left the city destroyed. Put note seven. You were the counselor there. In the Skyline Library, you have the illustration of a illustrious artist, Latino, telling us what's going on in the Tijuana River, 1993. What have you done?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Criminals.
Mark, so this is from this video title on YouTube for everyone to see, at 5 minutes 28 seconds, this quote. "The United Nations and the World Economic Forum signed a strategic partnership framework in 2019. On September 22, 2020, the United Nations General Assembly announced that China would be tasked with collating all the world's data on human movement and activity. It is called G E O I N T. China's richest man, Jack Ma and Melinda Gates, are heading up the UN's Digital Cooperation Program, bringing all personal data of all people in the world into one central place." So I saw a video, or actually an article today. It's a Fox article. Here's something it was talking about. From the article, "Meet the Ex-Biden Appointee Who Could Be Major Force Against Trump's AI Agenda Doomsayer." Rand has posted on social media in recent months, warning that AI will fundamentally reshape the economics of cybersecurity, and that the growing use of AI chatbots for mental health support means society is deploying pseudo-therapists at an unprecedented scale. Now, why do I mention all this? Because, and I have 30 seconds left, you guys have to do your homework out there. See this? This is about Agenda 21, UN Agenda 21. This is about our economy after 1981, the elite, the lines were moving together upward in the economy until 1980, then the elite just branched off. It's so corrupt that low-income housing doesn't work, having us subsidize it because companies won't pay people a living wage. That instant disaster. See this? It's got graphs of the economy, wealth inequalities. Guys, 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes to understand the economy and the scam.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I've called your name. Ilka Weston, Flower Alvarez Lopez, and Jennifer Lotero. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Good morning. I'm speaking out of order, is that okay? Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Flower Alvarez Lopez. I am in District 5. I serve as the co-director of a community-based and rooted organization in North County called Universidad Popular. For the non-agenda item, just wanted to say hello to Board of Supervisors, let you know that I'll be sharing the day with you. I'm planning to be here for the rest of the day. So we'll be in the audience. So I'm going to keep it short and look forward to speaking on the other agenda items today. But just on the record, just wanted to make sure that our organization was on the record today with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Is Jennifer Lotero present? Thank you, Audra. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm about to call the additional speakers. Seeing that Ilka Weston and Jennifer Lotero are not present, we'll invite forward Evelyn and Parita Javier.
Start with a letter to your neighbor. Or you greet them, please.
Hello there. Science declares...
Science declares that climate change is real. Global warming, that's warming, is true. Clean air, we all agree, is foremost in our healthy survival. Young adults and fragile elderly residents, especially those with existing medical condition. Respectfully, we convey to you that our vulnerability and exposure being immediately proximity to your home-based business, ceramics, manufacturing, and count operations have been impacting our health, safety, and general wellness ever since whether wood or gas fueled in parentheses conversation to gas and started June 13, 21 and 21. Ceramics and pottery count, wood or gas emits pollutants and toxicity. Hazards are known and very widely published. With our prayers, faith, and goodwill, friendship, and spirit of neighborhood, we plead...
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Evelyn, please go forward. We'll call the final speaker, Michael Brando.
Michael, are you here?
While Michael's making his way to the balcony, we'll hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll hear from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We'll begin with our first caller.
Barbara Gordon. As a public health educator, it's been hard to watch the marijuana industry infiltrate our communities. Most science experts agree that there is no data to support increasing marijuana outlets in the county. Marijuana has the potential for abuse and has no scientifically proven medical value. Therefore, adding more pot chops would only imply to our children that marijuana is safe. That couldn't be farther from the truth. Research tells us marijuana use is associated with schizophrenia, psychosis, anxiety, cardiovascular issues, and more. And it disputes research indicating that marijuana could be used as a therapeutic option in treating many other disorders. The community is tired of smell, the smell of marijuana flooding every public space. That smell says to our kids that marijuana use is safe or normal. But data is clear, marijuana is a dangerous drug that has only become more dangerous over time. That is why we must protect our children from predatory marijuana businesses that addict its customers for life. Adding more marijuana outlets invites heavier use with high potency THC, which adds more addiction to our young people and adds long-term cost for individuals and communities. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Michael, if you'd like to come up, thank you.
Michael, I have discovered something fantastic. These, wearing these to these meetings and not being able to hear the garbage that is coming off the dais, the garbage and the lies. I want to say a note of thanks to Caesar Javier and Priti for coming to these meetings. But I watched just now from the gallery how all of you looked at them in a way that meant you actually didn't look at them. You didn't look at them at all. You were all so rude looking down. And yesterday, your former colleague, Monica Montgomery Stepford at City of San Diego, Sean Hilo Rivera, and Vivian Moreno were just chit-chatting, totally talking, looking away while Caesar was there. You say you want people to come to the meetings. That's a fat-out lie. You don't want to hear anything that you don't want to hear. Monica Montgomery Stepford, you think that you're going to stop what's happening in the country? I'm not a Trump fan, but I've heard you've teamed up with Sean Hilo Rivera with this idea that you're going to stop change. This isn't about Democrat and Republican. This is about being a human, being a human versus being anti-human. Yes, because the same pattern that goes on at City of San Diego and so on here, many of you, Monica, practice Darbo, Darbo. You deny, you attack, and you reverse the idea of who the victim and the offender is. That's a common narcissistic tactic. We're entering into a new age where this isn't going to work anymore. Wake up. How good can it get?
Thank you. We'll now return to the individuals that requested to speak by phone.
All aboard. More and more government predations tampering with reserve funds, building expensive homes which might not be needed when they're built, sole source with companies, your flunt and others, things like that make it clear that you're using us as a piggy bank. And they're trying to hide behind their actions, bury them in consent, and don't take this personally. They all do it. They bury things in consent, combine items so we can't protest them all, shorten our speaking time, move them to a day when people won't be here. The right of the people to address the board should be basic, and combining, moving items around or to the next day should not deny this. At the Tuesday meeting, for instance, on June 6, there were 724 items. Two of them were deferred to Wednesday, and this happened at least three more times. That people who work or have kids are less likely to be there or even speak. Moving the award and ceremonies up to Wednesday, by the way, might improve attendance and create a bit of time on Tuesday. The unemployment rate in the county is now 5.2%. Can we really afford unions tampering with wages, inflated rents, ridiculous fee increases? All of these will cause inflation and drive away more and more tourists. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller. Next caller is Consuelo. Your device might be muted.
Consuelo here. Amen, Paul DeBaud, and amen to Michael. We live in a county where the illusion of prosperity is paraded as progress. Government celebrates a quote-unquote "strong" economy, yet thousands of people sleep on the streets, families go hungry, and ordinary people are drowning in debt. That is not prosperity. That is control, and it's dressed up as success. Homelessness isn't an accident. It's the direct result of policies that benefit investors and developers while the people are left with scraps. Hunger isn't a coincidence. It's manufactured through endless taxes, inflation, and the constant squeezing of working families. They tax income, purchases, sales, utilities. From birth to death, we are treated as tax cattle, funding a system that enslaves us all while pretending to free us. Mental health crises are exploding, not because people are broken, but because the system is purposely broken. The human spirit was never designed to live this way, never designed to be controlled by greed, lies, and manipulation. The depression, the anxiety, the despair, they are symptoms of a sick system that steals dignity, choice, and truth. You sit there and pass policy after policy incrementally fulfilling an agenda at the United Nations while pretending to serve the people. But you don't work for the people. You work for the agenda. Whether you want to admit it or not, and every vote you pass that deepens debt, raises taxes, and keeps people dependent is proof of it. San Diego County is not thriving. Its people are stretched thin, struggling to survive, while you congratulate yourselves on illusions. Time to stop lying, time to stop enslaving the very people who pay for everything you do, because the day is coming, and more people are waking up. And when they do, this entire house of cards will fall. Wake up, San Diego.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Pam. Most people will agree the N-word is repulsive, as it was viewed at this meeting on August 26, 2025, by one public member. But it is no more nor less egregious than insults slung at the public by the women on this board in response to the public speaking in opposition to your agenda items. At that same meeting, Monica, you self-elevated your status above supervisor to levy your judgment on public speakers as immoral, because they did not agree with the rating of the county's reserve funds for employee bonuses, pet projects, and the perpetuating of marginalized communities. Paloma, you used your favorite word, racist, in an attempt to denigrate public speakers for the same reason, those not in favor of stealing from the county's reserve funds. Shame on you for insulting Americans and legal residents residing in this county. This board owes an apology to the public. Regarding labeling people, Tara documented misinformation by calling immigrants illegal or otherwise "San Diegans." There is no such thing as a San Diegan. Therefore, immigrants are not and cannot be San Diegans, as referenced in your item number 23. And these illegal immigrants are not new Americans. They are citizens of the country from whence they came, millions arriving illegally under the Biden administration with endorsement of many on this board, which led to the abhorrent situation for unaccompanied minors that will be addressed in item number 16, and then perhaps maybe an influx or increased cases of tuberculosis that will also be addressed today.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller this morning.
Sarah Stedman. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello. Okay, my name is Sarah Stedman, and I'm calling in today to discuss the COVID vaccines and what's happening on the front line. First off, I want to let you know that you all injected yourself with HIV. Yep, I said that, HIV. HIV is unique because it hides inside your chromosomes. After injection and any infection, it uses an enzyme that turns into RNA into DNA, and then it inserts into your own DNA. This gives HIV a huge advantage. The virus becomes part of your body and making infections permanent and very hard to eliminate antibiotic resistance. That same process weakens the immune system. This is called AIDS. Without a strong immune system, this is why we are seeing people with aggressive cancers and T cells are destroyed. Anyone listening who's vaccinated, you better detox. Anybody who's single and dating, stop having sexual relationships with people. You can also get this, you can also get AIDS and/or cancers or die suddenly. I pray for everyone vaccinated and seek holistic... Anyone who puts these horrific vaccines onto people, you are a domestic terrorist, and you are liable, violating executive orders 13818 and 13848. Justice is coming for the people who you all destroyed their lives forever. Each time you vote, you create a stamp of corruption and screwing yourself. It's documented and recorded. Good luck in Supreme Court. You will lose, and your death penalty will be your future.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes our request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the general legislative session of August 26, 25, and August 27, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No movement.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor McGee, a second by Supervisor Anderson. Andrew, please call the vote.
Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you all. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. This is items 1 through 15 and item 23. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after supervisors pull any items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion? Or do you have comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Vice Chair Montgomery Step.
I don't think there is a need to pull, but just on the appointments item, which is item number 14, I want to vote for all the nominees except for the reappointment of Philip Kendra. So I don't know if I need to put that on the record or we need to bifurcate, but that would, I would be leaning on the chair and county council and the clerk for.
Andrew, if the, if she, if Vice Chair would like to bifurcate the vote, does she can just register a no or an abstention on that one individual? Do we need to pull that item?
She could register a no vote on that individual because it is part of the recommendation, so we could register a no vote on that individual. And just to confirm, that was for Philip Kendra?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair Protem McGee. Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to pull item 23. We're running down the Phil Kendra. What I've been, what I see, I don't believe is my Phil Kendra. So I just want to, my staff's reaching out to confirm, but I don't believe it's the same Phil Kendra.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's, I appreciate that. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond?
I only had comments on item 23, but since it's been pulled, I have no comments on any of them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. On item number 14, I felt unable to support Phil Kendra at this time because I didn't have sufficient information, given the social media posts I've seen. So I'll be registering an abstention, but obviously, I think, you know, Supervisor Anderson, I want to be supportive of, you know, your ability to choose the folks that you want for your boards, but I will be abstaining on that specific person. So with that, we now turn to public comment. Do you have a motion and a second for the consent agenda with the registered no vote on the Phil Kendra appointment by Supervisor Montgomery Step and the registered abstention by myself? Do you have a motion and a second?
So moved.
A motion? A second? Okay. Okay, sorry, go ahead. Do we have a comment, another comment by Supervisor Protem McGee?
I'd like to register my abstention at this time as well. Thank you.
Okay, so Supervisor Protem McGee will also be registering an abstention on Phil Kendra.
Madam Chair, maybe we could just pull Phil?
Great.
And then bring him back after we've confirmed that it's not one and the same.
That would be fabulous. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll note for the record that the motion includes a withdrawal of the reappointment of Phil Kendra on item 14. And with that, we have 23 requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, seven in person, and 16 requesting to speak by phone. As a reminder, item 23 has been pulled from the consent agenda for discussion, so any individuals that requested to speak on item 23, please hold your comment until the board discusses that item. We'll receive public comment on that item separately. Any individuals that requested to speak on the remaining items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and we will ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals. Caesar Javier, Jamie Howard, and allegedly Audra. If I've called your name, please come forward. If I've called your name, please come forward.
You are even confused on what to discuss. Continues while I am speaking. Thank you, ma'am. We are here for justice, which means participation, helping our region to discuss these items here. I could only generalize, or we call it in UCSD or State University, we call it band diagram pointers. That would be easy for us. We talk about here or discuss about procurement, procurement, services that we are not capable to do. How much shall we pay for these services? This is a source of corruption. It's all about money. You know that Citizen Steve, Citizen Raymer, Citizen Aguirre, and the rest of the two kings in their own ways. We notice in this consent homelessness is just below the intensity. If it's an earthquake, it's only practically .01, which is a priority. It's not also listed as guidance from this book, domestic tranquility, public welfare. I'm sorry. You are criminals.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Again, please identify which item on the consent agenda you're speaking about. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. The consent item is item number 16. My name is Jamie Howell. I'm speaking upon not just myself, but...
Item 16 is a discussion item?
Okay, I'm sorry. Discussion item.
But sir, this is only the consent agenda, so we need to speak on items numbers 1 through 15, because those are the items on consent.
Okay, I apologize. I yield my time.
Okay, no worries. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please. I'll invite three additional speakers, Michael Brando, Evelyn, and Mark. If I've called your name, please come forward.
I wish you guys would abstain more, or just pull out. You know what I'm saying? Anywho, anything to do with the sheriff, you know who I am. My person uses the name Audra. Anything that has to do with the sheriff, as well as HHS, Dr. Kimzie, who is engaged in the abuse of children, and hospitals of sharing data, right? Because you guys partner with Radies. How cool is that? Then you can hide the sexual abuse, right? And then you partner with the sheriff, too, so that you can cover it up. Isn't that nice? Because it's such a stain on, you know, the agency when there's sexual abuse going on, right? Something you want to make sure you cover up so that, you know, dang it. Forgot my shirt. That's all right. Malaika and Zaya Robinson, yes, they will be returned to their family. They will not continue to be sexually abused, because Kimzie refuses to do anything. You know what? You stick your little social workers on the parents, on a mother, watching her walk into the bathroom, like literally going into the bathroom with her. Here we go. Thank you. These girls, you know who I'm talking about. You know. I know. Yes. Stop my time. Thank you.
Audra, just remind you, please speak to us. Thank you.
Sure. I will speak to Kimzie, and I'll look at you, but I have a lazy eye, so sometimes it goes over in a different direction, right to the culprits, who are literally adding me to reports, saying that I'm coaching Malaika, so that she will report sexual abuse. Have you looked into her eye when she's telling you about someone named Gigi? Hmm? And then terrified to go home? And you know what you do? You work on terminating...
Pause Audra's time. Pause Audra's time. Audra?
He knows Malaika. Her names are all over the reports. Her signature is on it. They are lying in their reports.
Okay, you can continue her time. Just talk to us.
She is a liar.
She is being paid to lie in reports, cover up sexual abuse. I'm talking to you.
Okay.
But she's doing it, and you know it. Her name, her signature is on it.
Michael, criminality all around. Let's talk about number 10, property tax rates. I don't have time to talk about this, because we have so little time here. But if you go to YouTube, Jim, I hope all of you do this, if you go to YouTube and put in Amper Sand, Amper Sand Clips, you know the word clips, 033, 033, you will see a beautiful presentation that was done at City of San Diego yesterday, showing how taxes are used in the county of San Diego for the fraud of affordable homes. So when you have an item like property tax rates, what's being left out here is all the machinations, all the things that are going on behind the scenes, all the things you never talk about, all the things you keep people in the dark regarding these things. Why is that? Why do you not educate people? Why do you not want people to thrive? Why do you not want to see funds that are contributed from people's work and time and emotional energy to go to really building helpful, strong, community-driven lives? It's not happening. But yet you come up here and you want to talk about property tax rates. Why is that? How can that change? Do you want it to change? Or Tara, do you have handlers that are watching you that keep you in certain guidelines that you can't go out of? You know, the thing is, with all of this stuff, we're getting to a point where it's going to become more and more uncomfortable for you, and you're going to have to choose which side you're on. And I'm not talking about Democrat and Republican. I'm talking about being human and non-human. How good can it get?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I identify as a human named Evelyn. So here we go. I'm going to talk about agenda 2 and 3, right? Sheriffs are complicit in this, because when my child spoke up about someone named Gigi possibly molesting her, they covered it up. They covered it up with your minions' help. Yes, yes. And you know what? I believe my daughter. I believe my daughter, because my daughter has never lied to me, all right? Why are you guys hiding sexual assault from a three-year-old? A three-year-old! A three-year-old! Are you guys listening to me? You guys can't even look at me in the eyes, huh? Because what? Only you. Thank you. Why? Why are we hiding sexual assault? Why is the sheriff complicit? Huh? Why? And let me just be more specific about the sheriffs, the La Mesa, Mesa sheriffs. Huh? Yeah, Kimzie. Sorry. I also got a lazy eye, too. Sorry. Your signature is all over the place, and you know what? My children would not be adopted out just because you guys want to hide sexual assault. Are you, a three-year-old? You guys are not getting it? It's a three-year-old. Gigi? Gigi? Let me just tell you, you should be counting your days, because my daughter is going to be returned to me, and when she's returned to me, Gigi, watch your back. And it's not a threat. It's a promise. It's a promise that I'm making to my daughters that I'm coming for you. Thank you.
Mark, 6 and 10. On 6 and competitive solicitation for an administrative for homeless housing, it's such a bullshit idea entirely, and people never think about this. They never think, actually. So here's the truth. You don't want low-income housing. You don't want anything that you people are doing. What we need is not for the middle class to subsidize housing, as it becomes poor and poorer from inflation. We need a system where the corporations and the companies are paying people a good livable wage, returning the middle class to somewhere remotely close to where it was maybe in 1955. This is a graph, and it's from this video title on YouTube. That video title. And this graph shows that up until 1980 after World War II, every, the economy was moving up, the elite, the middle class and the poor were moved, the lines were moving together on the graph upward. And 1980, the elite just branch off into infinity, while everything else just kind of stifles. When you have this added to inflation, you can see these videos, wealth inequality. This one's very important. It doesn't have the right solution of the end, but is the quickest description for anyone over fifth grade of the Federal Reserve and how it causes inflation. Watch it from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes. This should be required to get out of sixth grade. In a free country, it would be. So once you realize that, that they're causing that and causing people to be poor and lose their homes, then you notice number 10, where they're raising property tax. And people can't keep up with it like you guys are, making over $200,000 a year. What a total scam. I have six seconds left, and you need to see the Rosa Corey videos, these titles and these times.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll start with our first caller.
Funding for TB control, given the lying, forced manipulation, forced medication, and misinformation, and general disruption that occurred during COVID, and many are still feeling the effect. I do not know whether we have to trust HSSA with managing this. And the separate, that separate TB cases have been detected on MTS, and reported to the public months later raises red flags over who can properly administer this without waiting and making things sound like government fear tactics. Frantic, toxic. Another single-source procurement, this would be for blood and urine testing for controlled substances. Could do with ourselves, in fact, or yourselves. This would be competitive, not sole source. Spare wheels. So an ambulance going over an unpaved or riddled road, or one that has a lot of broken stones or glass, would lack a spare tire if something happens, like they need a spare tire. This would increase your liability insurance cost. The letter says it's to increase space in ambulances for critical medical equipment. Well, if a spare tire is taking up so much space in ambulance, why don't you put it outside, like on the roof or something, or on the trunk? HSSA, at least, I'm not sure why it's in the behavioral health for North County Central, is in San Diego Bay Park, which is neither north nor central. You want that facility and say rent it?
We'll hear from the next caller.
Okay, going solo here. So, you know, the consent calendar is always the same story. You know, a mountain of important items shoved into one package, giving people only two minutes to air their grievances, while you quietly move forward with decisions that affect millions. That's not transparency. That's strategy. You call it health and human services, and it's far from it. The system does not care about human health, mental or physical. If it did, people wouldn't be drowning in medical debt or turned into lifelong customers of Big Pharma instead of being healed. If it did, we wouldn't see skyrocketing mental health crises, while the root cause causes debt, stress, control, go ignored. And homelessness, you parade housing and support as compassion, but it is nothing more than dependence wrapped in a pretty language. You do not lift people, you keep them reliant. Because the dependent population is easier to control, easier to manage, easier to manipulate. So stop pretending that this is about health. Stop pretending that this is about housing. This is about control, and everyone knows it. The people of this county deserve better. They deserve dignity, they deserve truth, and they will never get it from this board. They deserve to also wake up. The no program, you know, basically, the programs that you guys offer, they're all for profit, and they profit off of the people suffering. Done.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kathleen Meppe, and I'd like to speak to several consent items. One regarding single-source procurement. Instead of competitive bidding, requests for proposals or open-market procurements, they are in, the single-source procurements are not in the best economic interest of taxpayers. Regarding item 7, tech finding, TB, additional funding for TB, the genesis of this increase in TB is the result of a failure to require health screening of immigrants, especially from countries where TB is still endemic, or that the TB is drug-resistant TB. The U.S. once had TB under control, but now the native population is put at risk for these failures. Yes, to explain, to extending public notice by two days, giving county planning groups and residents at least a week for review. This is especially important, because the county puts too many items on consent with too little time for the public to digest, and they are often obscured by item titles that the public have to do research on. Irrespan, regarding compensation, irresponsible electives do not, irresponsible electives should not spend out rainy day funds squirreled away by previous responsible supervisors. Item 13, increased compensation should be based on merit, positive outcomes, and if on your watch, fiscal deficit results, increased compensation is not justified. Also, union, employee bargaining works against taxpayers, favoring union workers and eliminating independent contractors and workers. And last, the high, high needs of risk of experiencing homelessness in item 7. That's very, very...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, Pam. Let's see. No on 5, 6, 10, and 12? 7 is what I'll speak on. The latest CDC data draws a dramatic difference in tuberculosis cases rate between individuals born in the U.S. and those born elsewhere, with more cases in non-U.S.-born people. According to the CDC, after an all-time low in 2020, we all know who was president then, and cases began increasing in 2021 and continued through at least 2024 under the Biden administration. Therefore, any increase in tuberculosis cases in this county can be attributed to the open border allowing millions to invade this country, endorsed by most of you on this board. Ironically, this item supports the quote, "county vision of a just, sustainable, and resilient future for all, including those that have been historically left behind." So by permitting the invasion at the southern border, this board put those communities at increased risk. This item claims to continue, quote, "our ongoing commitment to..." This item claims to continue, quote, "our ongoing commitment to the regional live well, San Diego vision of healthy, safe, and thriving communities," unquote. Unfortunately, tuberculosis will be another tragic fallout of the open border promoted by some members on this board. So due to your culpability, please accept this money to help those who are or will be afflicted with TB because of the illegal invasion into our country. Purporting to be a champion for marginalized communities is misinformation. In other words, a fairy tale. We see right through you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Sarah Sedman. For all the patriots in health, this is for you. It's time to bond badges for sheriffs that aren't following their oath, cannot step on maritime law and constitutional law. You cannot. You're a violation of your own oath, and it's time to bond your badges. Also, it's also time to take away politicians' purity bonds.
Good morning. This is Peggy Walker speaking to item eight. I respectfully urge you to extend the publishing time for board agendas so that speakers are assured. Time to prepare meaningful messages. Most of us have busy lives like yours, but with no staff to help us prep, and we take great pains to speak at these meetings. Those who attend in person can travel one to two hours just to get there, and for others, I can assure you that taking a break from work to speak on video can be time-challenging, a real balancing act. So please respect that. Hosting agendas only six days prior to meetings and worse, making late changes or additions just one and a half days prior to a meeting gives woefully little time for awareness or preparation. So more time will enhance our ability to meaningful, meaningfully participate in this process of decision-making that shapes our lives. I ask your respectful attention to those who speak and public comment as well, just as you expected when you're speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'd like to address several items on today's consent agenda. Item number one, if you consider strengthening protections against elder abuse, I want to highlight the sharp rise in marijuana use among older adults. Marijuana use in seniors has grown rapidly in recent years, and emergency room visits and cannabis use disorder diagnoses are climbing. These risks are not just about health, they heighten vulnerability to abuse. Marijuana-related cognitive decline, balance problems, or financial strain can make older adults easier targets for neglect, fraud, or exploitation. Caregivers may miss signs of impairment while abusers may take advantage of diminished judgment. As the county expands the later life program and family justice centers, I urge you to raise awareness of substance-related risks into elder abuse prevention. Doing so will strengthen protections and ensure older San Diegans are not left unprotected. Item two, this agenda item is especially important today because marijuana-impaired driving is a growing threat. Unlike alcohol, there is no roadside breathalyzer test for marijuana. So law enforcement must rely on delayed blood or saliva analysis to confirm impairment. Consider the statistics. In California, drug-involved traffic fatalities, including marijuana, rose 71% from 2011 to 2020, now accounting for 24.5% of all crash fatalities. We simply cannot afford any disruption in accredited toxicology services. It ensures that marijuana-impaired drivers can still be effectively identified and prosecuted. Item six, as you consider authorizing a search for a homeless housing and supportive services administrator, I want to highlight a growing cost driver to the county that must.
Thank you. On to the next caller.
Page Truth, item eight, I demand a 365-day timeline for the release of future agendas. At the rate of evil that's going to be passed here at Queen Lorraine and Nathan's speed, we need at least one full year to research the rest of terrorist quid pro quo backroom union deals going on with the C A O C. Item 11, the appropriation limit for the county seems to be out the window because on March 17th, Joel sent a memo to C A O Ebony that said, quote, "It is antithetical to community engagement, access, and equity to hold secret closed session discussions and revotes with the board on proposed budget cuts. The current process solicits very generic anonymous public input about broad budget priorities, yet keeps the public in the dark about what cuts you are considering for recommendations to the board," end quote. Item 14, what's wrong with military veteran Philip Kendro to the Military and Veterans Council? Did he say something about supporting Trump? Are the three queens already experiencing TDS today? I see a post, a past social media post from Phil talking about how Sandag needs to say no to Let's Go San Diego, and where he quoted Jim about Sandag having failed to deliver on past road projects that voters were promised. The real problem is Michelle Silverthorne on the Pine Valley Signing Group. She was a program officer for the state's COVID emergency rental relief scam. She was part of NGO profiteer United Way's COVID-19 Pandemic Strategy Meeting, and she worked for Union Minion Catalyst, and she studied regional planning and sustainable international development, AKA 15-minute resident cities. No, thanks. I don't want to see Pine Valley infiltrated and destroyed. Item 10, I believe the county is going to increase property tax rates. Is Paloma even eligible to vote on this? Why are people who can't be responsible with their own finances suddenly in charge of our finances?
Property tax, I default it. I have a commitment to pay it off. Have you begun those payments? Supplemental taxes are around $2,000. Yeah, $2,000.
Time to pay up, Paloma. Property taxes are another system of control that Monica will vote in approval of today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board. Gambler Hermes. At Chewy Vogue, consent items, contract funds, mere history, betrayal, elections were once pure but lacked trust. Let fraud seize control, unverified rules, 42.7 undervotes. In 2021, elect insiders who approve these deals and rich NGOs while chaining citizens to dependency. You silence critics like me with restraining orders, but history warns doesn't repeat. My citizen voter mailing address audit frees these votes, ensuring consent reflects San Diego's will, act, and precision. Now, thank you. On top of that, I want to go ahead and mention the fact, just further thing, we could go ahead, Nature Jab, fueling empowerment, blacking excellence, and building trust. Julian Brown, revolutionally, whatever, wafted into power with, basically, he's turning all plastic into fuel, completely eliminating it. It would reduce how much trash we're throwing away every day. We could also get rid of styrofoam. I mean, everything that you guys preach, that's him. That's your poster boy. Why haven't you guys mentioned? I've told you a thousand times, Monica. Why are you listening to the pharaohs? Please, I want to, I want to understand why you are listening to the slave traders, why you're not listening to the people. I'm really, really curious about that. But you're not going to answer because you don't have to answer to the people because we don't elect you anymore. Isn't that right? You use homeless people, and that's why 80%.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, Chair Lawson Reamer. My name is Teriann Skelly, and I'm here as a county planning group attendee and a community volunteer. One of the youth programs in the county that is important to me is the Start Smart program, which provide, is provided to high school students and their parents by the sheriff. Alcohol and drug use are a nationwide roadway safety concern. Oh, oh, you know what? I'm very sorry. I am, that was for my non-agenda, so I'd like to speak to one and six. I was thinking this is non-agenda, so I apologize. May I start again?
Please go ahead with your comments.
Hello?
Please go ahead.
Okay, so this, these comments are, okay, they're referring to item, consent items one and six. And you know my name, it's Teriann Skelly, and regarding item six, the high needs at-risk homeless population. As a mother of three adult sons, and I'm concerned about the already high rates of serious mental health illnesses and substance use disorders among those aged 18 to 25 that contribute to current and potential homelessness in the future. And the National Bureau of Labor expressed their uneasiness about 18- to 25-year-old males because they have the lowest return to work rates. Labor experts and health authorities have explored the complex reasons for this situation. Two factors they cite are, number one, alcohol and drug addiction, which has interfered with the receiving and utilizing job trainings, internships, or post-high-school education, and number two, the increase of marijuana use, especially the daily use of marijuana, where the negative impacts play a large role in the brain's motivational receptors. So you can imagine, as a mom of three adult sons, I'm concerned about the already existing marijuana businesses here in the back county. County residents need to have the board of supervisor and staff to concentrate.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, good morning. Oliver Twist, AKA Mary Davis. First of all, I wanted to give a big thank you, and this is for item eight, for releasing the board of supervisors' agendas early, is now up to eight days. A big thanks to C A O Shelton for putting this forward. I appreciate the good work you do and what, truly looking out for the people and not the partisan, unlike others. So thank you again for watching out for us. It's so critical that we end up having this extra time to prep. We don't have big thunders, funders, or people, and so the grassroots people that are truly paying attention rely on this extra time, and it is needed. And I know you have the time because this is evidenced by this last week when Chair Lawson Reamer held a press conference on Wednesday, or on Tuesday, the second, to let people know, but the public was not notified via the email system until Wednesday, the third, at 3:29. So I'm encouraging you actually to reach further and make a stretch goal of doing it at least 14 days and then aspire to 30 days. Sandag releases a draft budget, or not a budget, a draft agenda. So please put out a draft agenda 30 days beforehand, and then 14 days, release this agenda so that we, the people, and a quick shout out to the anti-marijuana ladies who steadfastly call out the tremendous harms and the collateral damage of legalization. Your work is noticed and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I came to express my support for consent items one, six, and eight. Mostly because of time, I'll address item six. I appreciate that this is primarily about seeking an administrator for the homeless housing and support services. Thank goodness. Can't imagine anything more centerpiece for the county's work than making sure people are sheltered and that they have the services they need. I happen to have in my circle of acquaintance someone who is so potentially homeless a lot of the time that I felt that I particularly had to address his situation because he is over 50, is over 65, and I have watched the trajectory of his life, and I have watched the choices that he made, and I just have to let you know from somebody who's been watching it all these years, and he has used the county mental health services numerous times, usually for 30-day stays, in your healthcare centers. His journey for drug abuse and for mental health problems that came with it began when he was 17, when he was using marijuana, and reoccurred again in his late 20s, and reoccurred again in his early 50s, when he used the more powerful THC products that are now available at pot shops. So you can imagine that if you care a lot about preventing homelessness in the future, you must care about mental health prevention as well and substance abuse prevention, and you cannot bring more marijuana businesses into our back crunch, country. This is so statistically an incorrect idea and will only hurt people. We who are been hurt by these, by this situation tell you, bad choice. These products are smoked and they are baked, and even from a lung and cardiac perspective, this would be a bad plan, but from those who become addicted.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, Chair and Supervisors. Thank you. My name is Madison, and I want to speak on item six. I want to highlight how increased cannabis access is directly tied to housing instability. As marijuana becomes more widely available, more people are using it, not occasionally, but as part of their daily routine. While it's often marketed as harmless, we know the reality. Cannabis can impair judgment, reduce motivation, and affect memory and decision-making. For people who are already living paycheck to paycheck, these effects often lead to mischief, job loss, and ultimately the inability to pay rent. The administrator you're selecting will be serving exactly those individuals, people at high risk of losing their homes. For many, substance use is not just a side issue, it's a central barrier to stability. When impaired judgment combines with financial strain, families are pushed over the edge into homelessness. Once they're unhoused, dependency often deepens, making it even harder to get back on their feet. San Diego has invested heavily in housing programs, and that's critical, but housing support alone won't succeed if we ignore the role of drugs. Expanding access to marijuana without stronger safeguards only accelerates the problem. If we want homelessness to be rare, brief, and non-recurring, we must treat housing and addiction prevention as inseparable. I urge you to ensure that whoever administers this program is required to work hand-in-hand with substance use prevention and treatment services. That integration is essential to keeping people not only housed, but stable, safe, and thriving in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the final caller this morning.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Megan Stewart, and over the years working with youth, I have become especially passionate about underage drug prevention. I'd like to talk today about item six and echo the previous speakers. In prevention, we see every day how housing instability and substance use are deeply interconnected. Youth who experience housing insecurity are more vulnerable to experimenting with marijuana, drugs, and alcohol, and those risks often follow them into adulthood. Likewise, we know that individuals struggling with addiction face higher barriers to securing and keeping stable housing. That is why today's action is so critical. By ensuring that San Diego has a strong administrator for housing subsidies, navigation, and support services, you are addressing one of the root causes of both homelessness and substance use disorders. The data shows us that older adults, youth, veterans, and people with disabilities are disproportionately impacted. Many of these groups are the same populations we see at higher risk for mental health struggles and substance misuse. Prevention is not only about stopping a behavior before it starts, it's about creating conditions where people can thrive and setting up people for success. Stable housing provides safety, dignity, and the opportunity for individuals to focus on their health, including recovery if they're struggling with drugs or alcohol. Without that foundation, prevention efforts cannot take root. I'd like to urge you to support this item, not only as a housing strategy, but also as a prevention and public health strategy. Together, we can reduce risk, strengthen resilience, and build healthier futures for some of our county's most vulnerable residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any further comments from my colleagues before we take a vote? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, a second by Supervisor Desmond.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting.
Okay, thank you very much. So we now move on to item number 16. This is our first discussion item. This is my item. This is This is our first discussion item, this is my item, this is the no child alone in court item, to expand immigrant, the immigrant legal defense program to protect unaccompanied minors. I will begin with just a couple introductory comments, and then we-
Madam Chair, we polled twenty-three.
Oh.
Are we gonna take that later?
We'll take it in later in order, yep. Thank you for the question, thank you for the clarification, yep. So just to clarify, item twenty-three was polled, for folks who didn't catch that, and we will take it in order on the agenda. Okay. So I'll make a couple comments, then we'll have opportunity for the public to participate, and then we'll have a conversation among my colleagues on the board. So I just wanna, I think, frame this and say that when I think about someone who has to go to court, and has to face a judge, and face decisions that determine their entire life, the notion of anyone standing there without someone who can help them navigate the system, who cannot be an advocate on their behalf, who does not know the law, to me feels grossly unjust. But when we're speaking specifically of children, sometimes as young as toddlers, the notion that you would have a kid in court alone, I can't imagine that being something that we could ethically or morally allow to have happen in our society. I brought this item forward to affirm a simple but powerful principle, which is that due process means a fair day in court, and a fair day in court is impossible without an attorney. Four years ago, we became the first Southern border county in the nation to establish our immigrant legal defense program, and since then, we've provided legal counsel to more than three thousand San Diegans, families who otherwise would have faced deportation alone. The results are undeniable, because with an attorney, people are able to prevail about two-thirds of the time. Without one, their chances drop to just about five percent. That's a difference of more than thirteen times. That gap in outcomes tells us there's something extremely broken in our system. The immigrant legal defense program helps level this playing field, and the representation also makes our system more efficient, reducing backlogs, speeding up proceedings, and saving taxpayer dollars. But today, we now face a moment of crisis. Earlier this year, the Trump administration cut off funding for the federal unaccompanied children program. Nationwide, twenty-six thousand children were stripped of their attorneys, including three hundred kiddos right here in San Diego. A federal government court previously ordered these protections to continue temporarily, but only until September thirtieth. After September thirtieth, unless we act here as a county board, toddlers, infants, preschoolers, elementary school kids will be forced to stand before a judge and a federal prosecutor entirely on their own. I think the picture I have in my mind, that breaks my heart, is a toddler clutching a stuffed animal, asked to answer questions in a language they don't even speak. That's what these cuts mean, and for me, that is morally unacceptable. As a mom, I cannot imagine my child standing alone in court, facing a judge. And so that is why I am proposing to add the unaccompanied minors expansion to the immigrant legal defense program. The No Child Alone in Court initiative is extremely simple, extremely straightforward. It will ensure that no child in San Diego County is forced to face an immigration court alone. Here's the bottom line, a fair day in court is impossible without an attorney, and that's especially true when we're talking about kids. So I would be incredibly grateful for the support of my colleagues in ensuring fairness and due process, and protecting our young people here in San Diego County. And with that, I would like to make a motion for this item.
I'm happy to second.
And we have a second from Supervisor Gary. With that, we will turn to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. We have fifty requests to speak on this item, thirty-two in person, and eighteen requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received four hundred and forty-eight e-commerce, four hundred and twenty of those in support, and fourteen in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item sixteen by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are ten or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I will ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Tracy Crowley, Erin Suramoto-Grossi, and David Hall. If I've called your name, please come forward. And you're welcome to come forward in any order.
Hi, good morning. My name is Erin Suramoto-Grossi. I'm the Associate Director at Alliance San Diego, and we are in strong support of this item. Since 2021, the immigrant legal defense program has provided a lifeline for our community members, and given them a fair shot. It's allowed them to have legal representation, and it helped ensure their due process rights. In October, when unaccompanied children lose their access to legal representation, this proposal will help young folks also make certain that their rights are defended. It will protect children in our region. The current federal administration is simultaneously working to increase deportations and deny due process. We've seen firsthand the need for increased legal representation, and this proposal will help by expanding staffing and exploring the budgetary needs to expand to a full universal representational model. We are in full support of expanding to unaccompanied minors, and also exploring future budgetary needs to make certain that we're able to get to a full universal representation model. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is David Hall, I live in Escondido. This is the first time I've been to one of your sessions, and I just, having listened, want to say thank you for your service. I also want to strongly support this motion. As someone who, as a retired minister, has accompanied a family in immigration court and observed the proceedings, it's inconceivable to me that a child be allowed to be in that room without adequate competent legal representation. I've imagined my own children, and now my grandchildren, who travel overseas, and to think that one of them could ever stand before a judge in a foreign country and not have competent representation is inconceivable to me. So I strongly would encourage and ask that you, as a Board of Supervisors, support this recommendation. I know that it's not the purview of this body to recommend and control immigration policy or law, but we do have the ability here where we live in San Diego to treat those who we find as our neighbors with the dignity and respect and the humanity that they deserve. So I would speak strongly in favor.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Amy Bryan, Jeremy Ross, and Jennifer Linsky.
Good morning, my name is Tracy Crowley. I'm an attorney with the Immigrant Defenders Law Center here in San Diego. Our organization has been providing legal representation to unaccompanied minors in Southern California for the last decade. As experts in this field, we know why every child needs a legal represent, legal representative in removal proceedings. A child without a lawyer in our immigration system is a grave injustice. Children who do not speak English, who do not read, who do not write, are forced to represent themselves in highly complex deportation proceedings. This could result in deportation before even being heard by an immigration judge. Less than two weeks ago, the Trump administration attempted to remove a plane full of unaccompanied children to Guatemala. It was the legal representatives that answered the call in the middle of the night and prevented that removal to a country that was not prepared to receive them. This measure could save a child's life.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
My name is Amy Bryan. I am a longtime resident of the beautiful city of Solana Beach. I'm also one of the founders of a group of community advocates known as the Tias. I also co-run a nonprofit organization, Solana Beach Free Farmers Market. In all of these capacities, I interact with people from all walks of life. Something I've always known and acted to fulfill is that every human has basic inalienable rights. Food is one I work very hard to provide for my community every day. A right I never thought that I'd need to advocate for, because it's so primal, so low-bar, so base, is due process. Due process includes the right to access an attorney and must be protected. The provision of an attorney is so fundamental to due process, because it significantly strengthens one's ability to defend one's own rights. And I can't believe that I'm living in a time where I have to point out that this due process, this provision of an attorney, must also be extended to children. Circumventing due process, particularly for children-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'd like to begin by thanking the four of you in districts one to four that believe in human rights, due process, and our Constitution. Thank you for ensuring more people in our community know their rights.
Can you please state your name?
I apologize, Jeremy Ross. That was not a partisan issue, and neither is this. This is about the Constitution. This is the next critical step. I have seen dozens of lives and families torn apart in front of my eyes at immigration court, all of these neighbors of yours and mine doing things the right way. It is our moral imperative, regardless of our views on immigration itself, to keep our children safe, to ensure due process, to enforce the protections granted by the Constitution to each person in this county, in this country. We urge the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to support this board letter to ensure all immigrants, including unaccompanied minors, have access to due process and legal counsel in the county. Thank you. Right thing.
Thank you. I'll invite three additional speakers, Anna Lang, Noah Yiyik, and Jesus Martin Gallegos Munoz.
Good morning, my name is Jennifer Linsky, and I'm here to urge you to support this agenda item. If there's one thing we all should be able, be able to agree on, it's at children, not just my children, or your children, white children, or US citizen children, but all children are our most precious gift. This is not about politics, it's about children, children who deserve a chance to be heard, to be safe, and to grow up without fear. No child should ever be left alone to face a judge, a prosecutor, in a system they cannot possibly navigate. Imagine an eight- or a twelve-year-old, or imagine a toddler. Imagine your toddler alone in court and expected to argue complex immigration law to defend their right to safety. That's not justice, that's just re-traumatization. There are children through no decision or action of their own who have been brought to our country by loved ones fleeing violence, poverty, and prosecution. In many cases, children have been forcibly separated from their parents, and now these children are asked to stand in immigration court. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Morning, my name is Anna Lang. I want to share my story, because I was one of those kids when I was little. I stand in front of judges, so scared, because I didn't know the language. When you come from an immigrant community, you get to hear crazy stories, unbelievable and unhumane. Kids who are scared, first, from being away from the person who they love the most, second, from people who they speak another language. You don't know what they're saying, but you see their mouths moving. Third, from hearing nonsense conversations and signing papers, they have no clue what they mean. And the list goes on and on. You get traumatized, I still get flashbacks, just been standing here for the first time. No kid should be, should be alone in court. Help them, support them. It's scary to be in a situation like that. It's even nev- Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Noah Yiyik. I am a researcher and policy advocate with the Center on Policy Initiatives, and a convener of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. Advocates worked hard through ISDF to establish a universal merits-blind program in San Diego that provides legal representation for all immigrants in detention. We fully support this board letter, because it continues to strengthen the ILDP by making it clear that no child should be expected to defend themselves in court, adding capacity and laying the foundation for long-term sustainability. Immigrants are often forced to face the complex immigration court system without legal representation, which can make the difference between being allowed to remain safely in the United States with their family, or facing permanent separation by deportation. At a time when militaristic kidnappings are terrorizing communities across San Diego, this program is vital to ensure immigrants have some protection in this unjust system. We urge you to vote yes on this board letter. Demonstrate your commitment to due process, leading with care, and building stronger, safer communities. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Karina Pugh, Liliana Serrano, and Janika F.
Good morning, my name is Jesus Martin Gallegos Munoz. I am a community organizing coordinator for the Chicano Federation of San Diego County, and a resident of District One, and I'm here to support item sixteen. Our families are fearful for the repercussions that ongoing attacks on our community will have on their safety and security. And these minors are part of our community. They are the sons, daughters, and offspring of the family members who we call our neighbors, our community members, and our brothers and sisters. They are the present and the future of our region. Beyond the right to legal representation and due process, they have the ethical and moral right to live with their families and be safe from safety, from family separation. No one should have to undergo these immigration proceedings without legal advice, above all, our children and teens. For all these recommendations, the Chicano Federation of San Diego County strongly supports item sixteen and urges your eye-vote and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Karina Pugh, my pronouns are she/her, and I am speaking in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. As the largest LGBTQ center along our bi-national border, we find it imperative that our local governments take concrete steps to support our immigrant friends, family, and neighbors who are currently under attack from the federal government. Immigrants, including LGBTQ-plus immigrants and children, are not often provided court-appointed counsel in the immigration system, and are often forced to face the complex legal system without representation. This can make the difference between someone being allowed to remain safely in the US with their family, or facing permanent family separation to potentially dangerous conditions. This board letter will help close the gaps in legal representation and demonstrate our county's commitment to due process and building stronger communities. The center supports this item. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, David Vance, Esme Quintero Kubian, and Caesar Javier. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, my name is Janika with Alliance San Diego and Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. This administration has repeatedly attempted to, and in many cases denied, providing immigrants access to counsel and due process rights by deporting individuals in the midst of their immigration cases without final removal orders and without ever seeing a judge. Beginning on October first, 2025, hundreds of unaccompanied minors will be forced to stand before an immigration judge without an attorney. Access to legal counsel is a fundamental civil right and cornerstone of our justice system. We urge the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to support the board letter to ensure all immigrants, including unaccompanied minors, have access to due process and legal counsel. And as a Kumia person, I have to say, no one is illegal on stolen land. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is David Vance, my pronouns are they/them, and I'm here to speak in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. As immigrants continue to face relentless attacks from the federal government and other powerful institutions, including a ruling from the Supreme Court yesterday that gives ICE the ability to detain people just because of how they look, what job they work, or what language they speak, our local elected leaders must take bold action to protect our immigrant friends, family, and neighbors. Immigrants, including LGBTQ immigrants and children, are not provided court-appointed counsel in the immigration system, and are often forced to navigate detention and removal proceedings without legal representation. Legal representation can be the line of defense that prevents family separation, the erosion of equal protection under the law, and forcing individuals fleeing persecution and violence to return to dangerous conditions. This board letter will help close gaps in legal representation for immigrants and unaccompanied minors, and demonstrate our county's commitment to do, to the due process that everyone deserves. The center supports this item. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Howdy all, my name is Esme Quintero Kubian, I use Beji pronouns. I'm a resident of District Four, and I'm also the outreach and organizing coordinator for San Diego Pride. On behalf of San Diego Pride, I'd like to say that we fully support this measure and this letter to strengthen the ILDP by making it clear that unaccompanied minors should be included and are entitled to legal representation. I myself, as the daughter of Venezuelan migrants, had to witness and experience how deportation can drastically tear apart a family and leave behind a family that takes care of itself economically, to ensure that racial profiling and other biased, ineffective policing efforts are mitigated by our local representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, Caesar Javier. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Ariel Lackey, Jamie Howell, and Ian Sorello. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Cesar, en purita. Pardon for our consistency and our inputs, but we would like to repeat again and again that this great region has been built a society that is a product of immigration. Stop campaigning. Citizen remer, we have the county Superior Court, they have that power and intelligences to do this. Stop campaigning. You're already there. Don't create some doubtful idea from these people. Line up here. It's based.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Ariel Lackey in support of 16. We are witnessing an all-out assault on families, both in San Diego and in our nation more broadly, due to the routine abduction of children being carried out by Immigration and Customs Enforcement. The California State Constitution guarantees the right of its residents to have representation during legal proceedings. Rights should exist for the benefit of all residents, but most of all, they should exist to protect the most vulnerable among us. There are presently about 300 unaccompanied migrant children in need of legal representation in San Diego. With all due respect to the members of this board, I ask you to imagine your own children in this situation, your children separated from you in an unfamiliar country where they don't even speak the language, making their way through a legal system that they don't understand. Imagine the outrage you would feel if your children didn't even get as much as a lawyer to speak in their defense. I'm here today to implore you to vote in support of our local program, to ensure that these kids continue to have access to an attorney. This matter shouldn't be a partisan one. This isn't a Democrat or Republican issue. This is a matter of cruelty versus kindness, immoral versus moral, injustice versus justice.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jamie Howell. I'm in support of item 16. As a person of faith and a member of the San Diego Organizing Project, I urge you to expand the county's immigration legal defense program to include all accompanied migrant children. My faith teaches me two principles: to love the Lord thy God with all my heart, mind, and soul, and to love thy neighbor as thyself. So supervisors, Desmond and Anderson, I ask you to strongly consider this matter because it's about loving your neighbor, no matter where that neighbor comes from. So I urge you all to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Allegedly Audra Sique Calderon Vargas and Felicia Gomez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning to everyone. My name is Ian Sorello. I am the chairperson of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium, SDIRC. You know, it saddens me that I have to be here, that we have to be here to argue that children need representation. You know, it's just, I couldn't believe that we are here trying to defend the notion that children and toddlers need representation in court. I am an immigration attorney. I defend a lot of these unaccompanied minors in immigration court, which is adversarial in nature. The purpose of an immigration court, unlike some family court where the best interest of the child is the one that is the basis of the decision, the purpose in immigration court is to deport a child from, you know, to a country that could be dangerous to their lives. So I support item 16. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Gomez, and I'm the campaign director at the California Immigrant Policy Center and a longtime resident of District Five. I'm here today to express my strong support for this item because it continues to strengthen the ILDP, which is especially important given the current administration's blatant disregard for immigrants' due process rights and the upcoming implementation of H.R. 1, which will result in more people being detained and a greater need for legal representation under the ILDP. Advocates worked hard through the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition to establish a universal merits-blind program in San Diego County that provides legal representation for all immigrants in detention. We continue to lead the advocacy and monitoring of implementation efforts of the program and are pleased to see that this board letter will make it clear that unaccompanied minors are included in the program, further safeguard people's personal and sensitive information, as well as add capacity for the program to represent more people and lead of legal representation in our region. I urge you to vote yes on this board letter. All people deserve due process rights. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite forward three additional speakers. Michael Brando, Evelyn, Brian Kugel. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Sique Calderon Vargas, and my pronouns are ella, she/her. I'm here on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. I fully support this board letter because it ensures that unaccompanied minors continue to be protected and eligible for legal representation under the ILDP. These children are not strangers to us. They are the children of parents who, with deep pain and incredible bravery, decided to send them to the U.S. in the hope that they would be safer here. We must remember that no child should face immigration court alone without legal counsel. Without legal counsel, they are defenseless and a system too complex even for adults. Legal representation can mean the difference between being allowed to live safely and reunite with family here or being deported back to unsafe and traumatic conditions. I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Brian Kugel. I am called to be here as a person of faith. By now, we know the cruelty of Trump's and MAGA's policies. With Trump and his supporters, cruelty is not a bug in his programs, it is a feature. It is the whole point of them. By his forcing minor children to appear in courts alone is especially egregious and must not be tolerated. It is particularly heinous to have little kids with no support, legal or otherwise, face an intimidating and overwhelming, even for adults, court system. It must be beyond terrifying for them. But that is what Trump and his supporters relish. I urge you to support this. Remember, what would Jesus do? Because he's watching.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Mark Flower Alvarez Lopez and Yusef Miller. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Michael, the ignorance in this room is unbelievable. It really shows the level of mind programming. Most people don't even know what an unaccompanied minor is. And for you to sit up here, Monica Montgomery Stepford, and talk about doing the Lord's work and doing love, it's egregious. Where were all these people when Walmart Wooten was here threatening to inject six-month-old babies with mRNA injections? Where have they been when the cries of babies in their mama's wombs are being ripped and cut up limb to limb? This goes back to what I started the meeting with. Darbo, deny, attack, and reverse the idea of who the victim and the offender is. I'm not a Trump supporter, but I tell you what, listening to this garbage makes me want to be one. How good can it get? You want to know? Good, buddy? Fine, now, you are a party.
Can we please be courteous to each other in the chamber? Thank you.
Mark, it's disgusting, Tara, that you are hiding behind children, doing your UN agenda for Newsom, who is a young global leader for the World Economic Forum. So I'm not right or left. A lot of people don't know that Trump signed the USMCA, replaced NAFTA Chapter 30, handed trade and immigration over to a four-and-elected council. We only have one American member on. He's not elected by any of us. What the UN wants and the WEF working together is us to be the North American Union. People need to see these videos. You can see that from three minutes to six minutes. You can see Rosa Corey talking about mega regions. I believe it's in Part Two. We're a mega region. We shouldn't be. We're supposed to be California of the United States, but we're Southern California. It's mixed with Mexico. This is what the UN wants. People need to see the Rosa Corey video, and we can't take care of all the people or children of the world. So, period, period. And they would all come here. We can't do it. You invited them, and now you're pretending that we're wrong.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
You may.
Thank you. Your time is up, Mark. Next speaker, please.
Dear Chair, Tara Larson Remer Vice, Chair Monica Montgomery Step, and Supervisors, for the record, my name is Flower Alvarez Lopez with Universidad Popular. At Universidad Popular, we believe all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. I'm a lifelong D5 constituent, a proud North County resident. I'm a North County girl through and through. North County is where I grew up, where I'm raising my family, and where I work. Our organization is deeply rooted in North County, serving communities along the 78, 76, supporting North Coastal Region, and working alongside our partners in Fallbrook. On behalf of Universidad Popular, I'm here to express our strong support for agenda item number 16. Protecting children should be our natural and immediate response. Too often, communities are labeled as immigrants even though our ancestors have been on this continent since time immemorial. Our ancestors did not arrive on the Mayflower, and it's the erasure of a history that makes this issue seem complicated when it's not. Please support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm going to be quick. My name is Evelyn. I'm against this, right? You guys are human traffickers. You guys are just helping traffic kids. Yeah, I see you smile. Yeah, you love that? You love to traffic kids? Yeah, I bet you do. You and Monica, huh? You and Monica love to traffic kids? Yeah, no, I'm against this. Yeah. Have a good day.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Teresa Perez, Clint Carney, and Jennifer Lotero.
My name is Yusef Miller, and I'm in strong support of this item. If a man who represents himself has a client as a fool, then what does it say about adults to take representation from children? And this is not a question of whether you speak English or not. A person raised in this country who speaks English very well could have a degree in English and go into a court system and think that they're talking a whole bunch of gibberish, another language that they don't understand, procedures that they don't understand. What about a child? A child that has to stand up there and speak truth for themselves to adults, which is intimidating in itself. Standing up in public speaking is an intimidation in itself, and we put children in a situation where they can't even be protected and represented in due process? This is a crime against that child. This is neglect of the child, and it's abuse of the child. So please vote the right way. Vote for children and vote for the protection and support of children. This is not an issue of language. This is an issue of ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Clint Carney. I'm on the advisory board of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. I'm with Survivors of Torture International in San Diego. I've said before that more than 40% of refugees, asylum seekers, and asylees who reach the U.S. are torture survivors. There are literally hundreds of torture survivors in O.T.I. Mesa Detention Center. Children are also torture survivors. Some of the children who are unaccompanied here in the U.S., they witnessed their parents being murdered. They witnessed their parents being tortured. Unspeakable trauma happened to themselves. So thank you very much for this item. I'm in support of it, and thank you for providing voices for children.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite the remaining speakers in person. Rudy Hernandez and Ensermio Estrada.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Teresa Pérez. I'm a part of San Diego Organizing Project, SDOP, and I live in District Five. I'm here to support item system, and I ask, please, like, vote yes and say yes to item system. As a person of faith and a member of the SDOP, I urge you to expand the county immigrant legal defense programs to include unaccompanied migrant children. I work in congregation, and I see how this deportation and detains impact the families. I see how kids are very worried and traumatic about what is going to happen to their parents. I don't imagine a child, be it from a judge, without, like, no, like, that process or anything there. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rudy. I'm a county employee and SEIU member and just a generally concerned constituent. Yeah, this is for children. It shouldn't really be a debate, but you never know. We are living in a surreal time, seeing children ripped away from their families for seemingly no reason, not legitimate ones at this point, anyway. Yeah, even at its most fiscally conservative stance, if it's about the money, some people may argue that money could be used for improvements elsewhere, but we also don't see that. Improvements also move at a snail's pace. But these children deserve representation just as much as any other person. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for allegedly Audra Liliana Soriano, Jennifer Lotero, and Ensermio Estrada.
Talk about people being confused about what an unaccompanied alien child is. I'll say it at the end, because this is so ridiculous. You incentivize these children to come. These children were trafficked across the border. Nobody cared about that, the fact that they were sitting there drugged, being brought with adults, or sitting there showing up alone. Nobody questioned that. Everybody incentivized it to happen, and then it's like, oh, well, then the federal government can take custody of these kids and put them back into the same program where you guys traffic kids through CPS and foster care and adoption. It's appalling. This is a money-making thing, and all of a sudden, you care about these unaccompanied alien children. What about the ones that died? Huh? What about the ones they can't find? You guys want to sit here and act like these are just minor children we're talking about? These are children that came here and seriously were drugged, Jim. Nobody cared about that. What the fuck is wrong with everybody?
For the record, the speaker is allegedly Audra. Next speaker, please. If I've called your name, please come forward. Liliana Soriano, Jennifer Lotero, and Ensermio Estrada. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good morning. My name is Ensermio Estrada, Chula Vista resident. I can't think of a more worthy endeavor than protecting the most vulnerable among us in a time when, you know, dehumanization of everybody is sort of the norm. Sometimes I'm still shocked that we can do that with children, folks that, minors, who are being thrown into an unimaginably cruel dehumanizing process. We live in the Borderlands. This is the largest port of entry in the Western Hemisphere. They're coming here because we were there, and if they're going to come here, we have a responsibility to make sure that each one of these children are not left in the dark to navigate a process that none of us could hope to do alone.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
Quote, "Here's another half-baked idea. It could be good, but it seems to be based on fear and no specific. Needs to be reworked. If the court order behind this expires, why don't you just extend it? Why are there no attachments? For instance, what actual win-lose figures more specific than the board letters nearly," in quotes, "for performance that?" And we should know, we should know how, what exactly is happening to children. Is the INS actually harming them, or is it road? Is the INS actually harming them, or is it rogue actors, either in the O.R.R. office of resettlement or outside the court? Can the lawyers control this, even if the children are destroyed before the hearing?
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Okay, Consuelo here, somebody who's actually paying attention instead of what we see here in the, in the audience. So, we're told this is about helping children, but where are the specifics? Are these kids being harmed by ICE, by rogue actors, as Paul mentioned, by the foster care system, or by the settlement process itself? No answers, no accountability, just fear-based language designed to secure more money for programs that lack transparency. Meanwhile, the Public Defender's Office already has $547 million budget. The ILDP already has $5 million. Now you want to add more, all while the county faces a fiscal crisis, even threatening cuts to police, fire, and emergency services? That is not prudent. That is recklessness. And here's the truth: No one wants to speak. San Diego locks up children 12 to 18 without bond. They are coerced into confession for crimes they never committed when they tell their public defender about torture and abuse.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Cam, these children are not San Diegans. These children are citizens of their countries. This crisis was manufactured by the Biden administration with terror support, which grossly and unjustly created these unaccompanied minors. These children shouldn't be here. The open border resulted in the destruction and even death of their families with the horrific result of their selling, theft, abandonment, and trafficking into this county. And now the county is faced with a sad consequence of what to do with unaccompanied children, the most vulnerable who terror did not initially protect. These children must be repatriated to their country and reunited with their families, if any are still living, or at least with those who still love. This board in the city of San Diego, Monica included, locked thousands of unaccompanied minors into the San Diego Convention Center. Hundreds of thousands of unaccompanied minors were born out of lies by the Biden administration and endorsed by this board. Thousands of these children are still lost or dead. This is a stain on America.
Thank you. Hear from the next speaker.
My name is Rahma Abdi. I'm the Director of Organizing with Pana, Department of Superior Advancement of New Americans, and proud resident of District 4. I'm here to strongly support this board letter. Right now, many immigrants, including children who came here alone, have to face immigration court without any attorney. Imagine being a child in a new country, standing in front of this judge with no attorney to speak for you. No child should ever have to go through that. Immigration legal defense will help close this gap. It makes sure unaccompanied kids and other vulnerable immigrants can have an attorney by their side. This is about fairness, safety, and giving them a real chance. As a community member, I know how important it is for our community to feel safe and supported. I urge you to support this item so that all immigrants, and especially children, can have access to due process and attorney that are present there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Hamira Yusufi with Pana, San Diego. Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer, for bringing forward this letter. I've worked with unaccompanied minors for many years. I've visited the unaccompanied shelter and seen how scared these children are without their families and support systems. These children deserve due process and fairness. Forcing children to face our complicated and broken immigration system alone is just inhumane, to say the least. Children representing themselves, while the U.S. government is represented by experienced counsel in these immigration proceedings, causes just this major imbalance in access to justice. I don't even understand how that's being allowed. The administration's blatant disregard for immigrants' due process rights and upcoming implementation of H.R. 1 will result in more people being detained and greater need for the legal representation through the ILDP program. This is such an essential program, and it must, you know, be implemented to also represent unaccompanied.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Gianna Giaccoloni, and I'm a resident of District 4. I fully support this board letter because it makes it clear that unaccompanied minors are eligible for legal representation under the ILDP. All immigrants, including children, facing deportation are not provided court-appointed counsel in the immigration court system. And the idea that children should be forced to undergo these extremely complicated and high-stakes proceedings without guidance is just unreasonable. Legal representation can make a life-changing difference. And the administration's upcoming implementation of H.R. 1 will result in more people being detained and in greater need of legal representation through the ILDP. This further underscores the importance to explicitly list up unaccompanied minors included in the program. Our current administration wants to strip away these protections because we know that access to legal counsel works. Ensuring that children have access to counsel is the bare minimum. We must specifically outline these protections and ensure their implementation. I urge you to support this important board letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
It's true, an immigration judge is the best thing these abandoned children could face, because what happened to the millions of children that didn't end up in court? Does terror care about those missing children? Nope. Does terror care about the potentially assaulted children under the watch of S.I.U., U.D.W.-supported nuscom DACA friend Dulce Villa Gomez and her pedophile partner at Little Hands Academy, Ezekiel Cruz Rodriguez, who entered our country illegally? Nope. There are only children alone in court because Biden and this board encouraged their traffickers to smuggle them into our country unaccompanied. TDS terror chose to disinvest over $20.3 million from our veterans to instead fund lawyers for the privileged few who've been allowed to criminally and illegally enter. Noncitizens are not entitled to our rights, our schools, our lawyers, or any of our tax dollars. This is a 100% political, unconstitutional program using children as a human shield for enabling illegal immigration. This board and all of the paid lawyers need to be investigated by the federal government. If people are not supposed to be in this country, they should be deported. They should be deported. Deported. Deported.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and Supervisors. My name is Brandon Sigwa, and I am a senior policy advocate with the ACLU San Diego and Imperial Counties and the ISDF Coalition. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. This is the Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. It means informing a person about the reasons why they've been arrested and giving them a chance to challenge any accusations made against them. Access to legal counsel is a cornerstone of our justice system. However, under U.S. immigration policy, people including unaccompanied minors seeking asylum or facing deportation are not provided court-appointed counsel. This is fundamentally unjust. All people deserve due process. San Diego County's groundbreaking immigrant legal defense program closes the justice gap in the federal immigration court system by ensuring all immigrants in detention have access to their basic due process rights. We support this board letter that will ensure that one of the most vulnerable groups, unaccompanied minors, has access to counsel. We also support the letter's direction, ensuring that the ILDP has the appropriate legal administrative support and strong privacy protections.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
I had this script, but that's not working for me, so I'm gonna go ahead and talk from the heart. Let's go in and talk about these kids. These kids were sold into slavery. They were sold to the cartel for whatever. I have no idea. And they were used to go ahead and help criminals cross the border. And then they were, then they were abandoned. And then that's what you're dealing with. But instead of addressing that issue and trying to go ahead and find out, look for justice on them, what the county wants to do is reunite them with the traffickers, which I find extremely disgusting. I mean, we've seen this so many times. And you guys don't care what happens to them once they get with the traffickers, right? So, what do you call that? Are we living in modern-day slavery? Is the puppet masters all the people with the pronouns that just showed up in here that wanted to go ahead and say, hey, look, we want to go ahead and give these kids to the traffickers? We want them to go ahead and get raped. We don't give a rat's ass about them. That's what...
For the record, that speaker was Gambler Hermes. We'll hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Bowman, S.D.C.O.E. employee, former CTAFA and resident of District 4. I'm calling in strong support of Item 16 because it strengthens the ILDP by ensuring unaccompanied minors can access legal representation. As a former advocate for youth in our county's dependency, juvenile justice, and rice courts, I've witnessed the fear and confusion that youth carry into courtrooms, many of them already survivors of trafficking, abuse, and traumatic family separations. Unaccompanied youths often carry these same burdens into a system that should protect them, but too often does the opposite. Every young person, regardless of where they come from, deserves dignity, protection, and a fair chance. No one of any age should ever be left to navigate our legal system without legal counsel. I strongly support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Oliver Twist, AKA Mary Davis here, and I'm calling in today on behalf of the hundreds of thousands of unincorporated area residents, where we are increasingly becoming a marginalized and underserved group. I wanted to speak, and I appreciated that a man talking about the opportunity cost. This is a case, a textbook case of the county diverting resources where they should be concentrating on serving the unincorporated area and instead diverting it to other things. We also have to look at the DNA testing. A lot of this was fomented when Biden stopped the DNA testing in 2023, which allowed the proliferation of abuse. And so far, 22,000 children have been recovered, more than 400 sponsors arrested, 27 of the minors were found dead, either murdered, suicide, drug overdose. Where was the outcry from all these special interest groups during that time? I'd also like to suggest that we make this a cost recovery program, if you go forward, where you act...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to share some thoughts on Item 16. As a retired social worker, I have so many questions, and I think a staff report should have been given to us to answer some of these questions. I'm curious as to how the children walked across the border without an adult, and no one did anything about it. Did they leave family members and friends in their host country where they grew up, and do those people know they're here? Would they walk them back with them? And if they walked across the border and no one seemed to care, that's kind of a problem we need to address. Did they meet with somebody here who was waiting for them? Who were they? Were they family members? And if so, they're no longer unaccompanied. Or are they somebody else? And we really ought to know who the somebody else is, if we care about protecting children. So many questions on this issue. We really, those of us who care about children, we should have the answers so we can...
Thank you. Then I'd like to invite for the remaining speakers in person Vanessa Regosa and Ilka Weston. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Ilka Weston. I am part of TAP, and the executive director is Yusef Miller. Our big concern is our youth. And yes, Board Supervisor and Chair Tara Lawson Reamer, thank you for actually realizing they need a lawyer there. But they need much more than that. They need housing, not cages. They need support, not hate. They're children. They are in their fight or flight. The only center you are born with when fully intact is the amygdala, not your frontal lobes. And I love the fact that you're starting, but what about a loving environment first? What about service animals, which I will happily bring all of my dogs, which are fully trained to be service animals? This is a good start. But what about their love? And I love how you look away from people you don't respect, but the care is, they need much more.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Regosa. This is not about Democrats or Republicans. It's about children. Federal grants were cut, and now this funding to protect kids has to come from the county. Desmond, I've seen your interviews. You're a racist coward. You blame others for the broken policies that came directly from the president you worship. You use excuses instead of taking accountability. Anderson, sometimes it seems like you have the conscience. It's time to prove it. Support the children, not the man you voted for, who protects pedophiles and strips legal representation from kids. You voted for the clown in office and turn around and blame us for the create, the chaos that you helped create. For once, take your racism hat off and see this for what it is. Children are suffering. Children are alone and afraid, and yet you stand against them. Don't say they should come here legally. Many children applied for asylum, but that system was turned upside down. Don't tell us you care about people when you can't even put your racism aside to help protect these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much for so many comments from our community. Begin with Supervisor, Vice Chair Monica Montgomery-Step.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you for bringing this item forward. Thank you to the public for coming out on this very, very important item. I do support the expansion of the immigrant legal defense program. I want to just highlight a partner that did submit or release a statement, Casa Cornelia Law Center, who's been doing a lot of work over the years since 2001 with unaccompanied children that are crossing the border. And I just want to see if, as we move forward with the recommendations, if they can be a part of the conversations and just provide their expertise, with, over the years having provided that pro bono service.
Thank you. From my point of view, the more that we have the community involved in shaping this program, especially the folks who've been doing the work, really understanding, like, what the needs are, and I think Casa Cornelia has, you know, been a trailblazer. So, I'd like to just, I think Michael Garcia is here somewhere. Michael Garcia is the director of our, of the program, the immigrant legal defense program. So, Michael, is that feasible to kind of really be intentional about, about including all of our community partners and advocates, and particularly Casa Cornelia, and those who have a lot of experience as we design this next phase of the program?
Yes. Good morning, Board. Michael Garcia, Chief Deputy Public Defender's Office, as well as Director of the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. Supervisor Montgomery-Step, that's correct. I've been, actually been in contact for a very long time with Carmen Chavez, who's the Director of Casa Cornelia. I've been doing so partly to try and see if I can get access to her attorneys in order to grow the number of lawyers in ILDP. And we do have an advisory panel that's made up of individuals exactly like Ms. Chavez, exactly like programs like Casa Cornelia. I more than welcome them. I've asked them in the past if they join us. We have room in our advisory panel for extra members, and again, Casa Cornelia is one that I've been working on and talking to for a very long time.
Okay. Thank you for that and good to know. Sounds like there's a good relationship there. In particular, with this expansion, though, I think it would be good, even if they can't serve on the committee, to get their expertise as a part of the evaluation and the recommendations before us.
We're actually also working on a collaboration with them in order to expand our services to take some of the clients that they are only representing on a limited basis through, like, a bond hearing, for example. So, I've been working with Jesse Embriano, who's the legal director at Casa Cornelia, in order to possibly take some of those cases that they take only through bond hearing to then take it to the very end as they go through marriage hearing, which is the trial in an immigration proceeding. So, we've begun some collaborations with them already.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. The only other thing I would just like to say is thank you to our Public Defender's Office, and I know that we're working on, this is, the expansion, of course, is certainly added to you all's plate. I know you've come to the table very willing to do the work, but, you know, we do have some structural issues and perpetual underfunding of the office that I think as we move forward with, you know, this board letter and others, that we would continue to take that into consideration through our budget process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Palma-Giri.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to align myself with what the Vice Chair just said. I hope that we can engage in that conversation in the near future. Chair, I want to thank you for bringing this item forward. Protecting children isn't just compassion. It's our fundamental responsibility as leaders. Without legal representation, as we've heard, these children face overwhelming, the overwhelming task of navigating, as we heard, a complex immigration system. So it is thanks to programs like the ILDP, children in these situations have access to dedicated legal advocates, and we're grateful for that work that you all do. These attorneys ensure these minors receive due process, guide them through complicated legal procedures, and help secure safe and stable environments. Unfortunately, the current federal administration's actions to strip away legal protections and representation from unaccompanied minors are absolutely unacceptable and morally reprehensible. No child should have to face such profound challenges alone, full stop. So expanding the ILDP to include unaccompanied minors aligns perfectly with our county's values of fairness, dignity, and justice. So today's measure reaffirms our commitment to compassion and equity, reflecting the very best of who we are as a community. So again, I want to thank you, Chair, for bringing this forward, and I am in full support of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. You know, let's be clear. This crisis was inevitable and avoidable. I don't know if you still need to be here or not. Do you want him to stay there?
Yes, he can go.
Okay. Thank you. It's okay. I'll talk to him, but that's all right. But this was inevitable and avoidable. When the previous administration allowed anyone into the country and dropped them off at a transit station with simply, with no vetting and just let them go, is a recipe for disaster, especially for unaccompanied minors. And now San Diegans are asked to clean up the mess. And we're talking about children and perhaps trafficked, exploited, now unaccounted for. That's not compassion. That's failure. In any country or any society that just allows unaccompanied children just to walk into the country without any help, without a parent, without an adult, is crazy. And I know the numbers vary, but I've heard anywhere from up to 300,000 unaccompanied minors are in our country. 300,000! And they're unaccounted for. We don't even know where most of them are. That is a direct failure. And it's just really looking at ourselves as a country that should never happen. And so one of the callers brought it up, but in 2023, the Biden administration ended DNA testing at the border. Where was the outcry then? It was silence. He ended DNA testing. That was one of the only tools, and it's just a swab in the mouth, to make sure that the people coming or bringing these children across were their parents. But ending that DNA testing, it was a reckless decision. That thing put a lot of children at risk. So I saw it firsthand. I went to the border several times. Buses unloading children, women and children are transit stations, some of them handed off to complete strangers. I saw young Chinese girls being loaded into vans. This should never have happened in the United States of America. Now we're being asked to force San Diego County taxpayers to pay for free lawyers for those who entered the country illegally. This is not compassion. This is punishing law-abiding citizens for open border failures. San Diego were already a super sanctuary county, protecting criminals instead of protecting neighborhoods. And last week, we saw violent offenders and child molesters and repeat criminals here illegally being arrested in our communities. These tragedies are not random. They are a direct result of open border policies and weak enforcement. Real compassion means securing the border, stopping traffickers, and protecting children before they can be victimized, not writing blank checks with taxpayer money. The open borders created this crisis. San Diego County taxpayers should not be forced to fix it. However, I do not support the Immigrant Legal Defense Program, which pays for deportees' legal fees. But these are kids, and they should not have to suffer alone or go through these proceedings alone. So I'm going to be supporting the item because these are children, and my mother taught me, always clean up your mess. This is our mess. We need to deal with it, but we got to make sure we don't have this happen again. Unaccompanied children and subjecting them to potential trafficking, sex trafficking, human trafficking is not the right thing to do for a country. I'm embarrassed for that, but I will be supporting the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from anyone on this item? Okay. Thank you again to all the public who came down to participate today. And to me, this is such a clear moral moment for our county to step up and do what has to be done to protect young kids who are alone in court, facing an incredibly uncertain future. So I hope to be able to count on the support of my colleagues today. I appreciate all the work and thought and leadership from community partners and advocates who've been leading the charge on this effort for decades and have been an incredibly important cohort of partners to put this together. So thanks again. We have a motion in a second. Please call the vote.
Chair Lawson-Reimer, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So next up, we have Item 17, Enhancing Regional Efforts and Federal Advocacy to Advance Solutions to the Tijuana River Sewage Crisis. On the agenda, it is positioned immediately prior to Item 18, which is Adopt a Resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Diego Relating to Advocacy for State Funding Allocation to Address the Tijuana River Valley Sewage Crisis" in an A-72 waiver. These are both items from D-1. So Supervisor Giri, would you like to take them together or separate? It's up to you.
Madam Chair, looking at, is that the correct time?
It is the correct time. And you would like lunch. Understood and heard. So I think, well, so this is, I think, the core thing. If we do 17 and 18 together, it won't significantly, it won't extend the time of the item. But if we do, so I think your choice, Supervisor Giri, is either one, and you have a presentation. So we could just do the 17 presentation and then take lunch and then come back and do everything after, if that's what you want, or we could do the whole item. It's your item, so up to you. Okay. So, thank you. So we will, so I will turn the floor over to Supervisor Giri to introduce the item. I know that there is a presentation, and then after that presentation, we will break for lunch, and then we'll come back for public comment and discussion, and we will take 17 and 18 together.
Could I ask, we bifurcate the vote on those two?
You want to take them separately.
And we can take them together, but I'd like to have the.
We can definitely bifurcate the vote.
Thank you.
Okay. So to summarize, Supervisor Giri will introduce the item, then we will have her presenter come and do her presentation. Then we will break for lunch, and then we will return and have public comment and board discussion. We will have Items 17 and 18 together, and we can bifurcate the vote. Any further questions? Thank you very much. Let's turn the floor over to Supervisor Giri.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm proud to bring this item forward. As we all know, for a long time, for decades, the Tijuana River Sewage Crisis has plagued our communities, but as we know, rather than improving conditions, they have worsened significantly. Our residents in South Bay are now enduring repeated exposure to toxic air, contaminated water, and deteriorating health conditions. To fully understand the scale of this crisis, and more importantly, to take effective action, we must ground our decisions in rigorous science and evidence-based data. I'm going to say that again, rigorous science and evidence-based data. It's essential that we listen to experts who have dedicated their research to clearly documenting the severity of these impacts on our residents and our communities. Today, I am joined by an esteemed scientist, Dr. Kimberly Prather from UC San Diego. Kimberly Prather is an atmospheric chemist, distinguished chair in atmospheric chemistry, and a distinguished professor at the Scripps Institution of Oceanography and the Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry at UC San Diego. Her work focuses on how human-generated emissions are influencing the atmosphere, climate, and human health. She is an elected fellow of the American Geophysical Union and the American Association for the Advancement of Science. Dr. Prather and her research team have conducted pioneering air quality studies that, for the first time, clearly show how untreated wastewater, industrial waste, and urban runoff from the Tijuana River become airborne as aerosols and toxic gases. Her work has identified a critical pollution hotspot in the Tijuana River, highlighted through direct community input, establishing a direct link between polluted river water and degraded air quality across San Diego County. Her groundbreaking work should inform our science-based policy decisions. Their findings translate research into tangible, actionable solutions that we can and must implement to confront this decades-long crisis. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Prather and Dr. Granados, who will now share a brief presentation highlighting their crucial research findings and recommendations.
Well, let's see. There they are. So, good afternoon, and I am really the only person standing, or the only one standing between you and lunch, so I get that. So anyway, but thanks for letting us go. I'm presenting this on behalf of myself and Dr. Stigler-Granados. But basically, I don't think I have to spend too much time on the first slide, other than to just make the point that when we know the beaches are polluted, when we know the water is polluted, we can warn people. But when the air is polluted, it's impacting people all across San Diego County, and we can't tell people to stop breathing, unfortunately. So next slide, please. So this was sort of when things started, like it was a year ago, as I mentioned during the proclamation. It was a year ago that we had sort of, I think we created quite a stir, showing the amount of sort of toxic gases that were getting into the air. And it really, again, sort of the point to drive home is air is your number-one exposure pathway. You inhale 11,000 liters of air a day versus drink two liters of water, right? And you can filter your water. And so, and you can choose whether to go to the beach. You can choose whether to go in the water, but you, again, can't choose whether to breathe or not. And so there's been a movement, and I think it's, hopefully, it's woke people up to the problem that affects all of us, not just people. I think a lot of it has been like, oh, that's just their problem. It's at the border. We're not going to worry about it. This extends all the way. The air goes all the way. There are no walls. There are no borders. The pollution does not stop at any border. It can travel for miles and impact millions of people. Next slide, please. So this is a paper that was just published on August 28th. This is the paper that sort of validates our validation of the people's voices, the community's voices, which was long overdue. But basically, this was published in Science, which is the highest journal you can get into. And it, again, these are all the different co-authors that were involved, as well, Paula was on there as well. But basically, we showed these incredibly high levels of toxic gases that are getting into the air. Next slide. So in September of 20, so I've been doing, we've been doing research, my team has been doing research down in the Imperial Beach region since 2017, largely looking at the spray coming out of the ocean, looking at bacteria and viruses. We published a paper showing that up to three-quarters of the bacteria you breathe in the air down there come from that polluted river. Recently, in March, we showed that cocaine and methamphetamine, drugs, pesticides, all of those can become aerosolized and get in the air, and people are breathing that. And so in September, there was a growing number of voices by the community. The Air Pollution Control District did a great job of sort of documenting these voices through order reports, odor reports. And we had always done our studies during the winter, when the river is flowing, because there's rain. Right now, the river is flowing. It is not a river. I refuse to call it a river. It is wastewater and industrial, with lots of industrial waste. It shouldn't be flowing. It should be dry right now. However, it's not. And it also flows mostly at night, and sometimes it flows, and sometimes it doesn't. So this is concerning. And so basically, in September, we started doing measurements. We thought we were going to do them at the coast, and we ended up, we set up our mobile lab. We now have measurements across the region. And then the community started saying, why are you measuring it at the coast? The smell is inland. So we went in with the community's input. There were 40 to 80 million gallons flowing at that point. There was no rain. This is pure industrial chemicals and untreated sewage flowing through these communities. It's just, it's mind-blowing. And so if you click it one more time, we just pivoted. If it's smell, it's gases. I'm an aerosol scientist, so all of a sudden, we're like, okay, what's the smell? Well, the smell of sewage gas, a toxic gas, hydrogen sulfide. So we started measuring hydrogen sulfide. Next slide, please. This is a region. We started, as I mentioned, in August, we were like, okay, we'll go to the coast. And then we ended up having to move inland, which I show here, this one spot that has become now infamously called the hotspot, the Saturn hotspot. And you can see the foam. That's not normal. That shouldn't be there. And so basically, we moved our trailer to property in Nestor, which is the closest community, and we started making measurements of hydrogen sulfide gas plus other gases and aerosols as well. And so we have measurements across the whole region, looking at what everybody's exposed to. Next slide. So this is sort of why it's happening. It's a turbulent region, portion of the river. You can see people sampling out there. They wear full biohazard suits because it's a biohazard and a chemical hazard. But what happens is the water gets forced through these pipes, as you can see. That turbulence creates the foam. It also is what leads to the release of these toxic gases and aerosols. It's turbulent at that point. So one of the biggest discoveries, the reason our paper got accepted in Science, is the first time somebody has shown this clearly, that water quality can impact air quality across an entire region. And basically importantly, nobody had ever shown it for a river. It's a river. And even more than that, it's one spot in the river that's a lot of it that's coming out right there. So I point this out because this is a fix, this part at least, would be, I think, a fixable part, fixable part that we can, that is part of Supervisor Giri's plan. But again, you can see the foam patch in the bottom right-hand corner from space. There's that much foam. You know, this is not, this is not normal. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is, again, a sort of a zoom in, and you can just see, and that foam is there all the time. Again, this summer, we haven't had rain. It's still flowing. Actually, today, for some reason, it's not flowing, and the foam's not there. So it kind of comes and goes. Most of the time, it's there. Next slide, please. So our team goes out and we measure what's in the water, what's in the foam, and what's in the air. Because not everything gets out, and that's what I'm an expert in, is understanding what gets released into the air. And so we always collect these paired samples, and we've now, as I say, expanded our reach across the whole South Bay region. Next slide, please. So here is hydrogen sulfide measurement, starting on September 1st. And just to calibrate you, urban levels should be one, less than one ppb, part per billion, less than one. We were detecting over 4,500, 4,500 times what's quote "normal." And this is a toxic gas. It burns your lungs. It does all, it has neurological effects. And what you see is those pulses, that's each night. And it comes, it's when the water is flowing at the highest, because they only turn on the flows. Somebody only turns on the flows at night for some unknown reason. And so basically, timeline, as we started doing these measurements, we saw these alarming levels. I'm a scientist. I would usually just publish these results. But I decide, we decided that we needed to alert the community. So if you go to the next, click it once more. So September 5th, I presented these results to our task force, San Diego County Human Health Services, and then things were still, you can see increasing, things were getting really increasing. So on September, next one, please. September 9th, one year ago today, we, as I mentioned, at that time, Mayor Giri, now Supervisor Giri, called a press conference. And so we presented our results. Again, I'd never done this before, and it created quite a stir. And there was a bit of pushback, is probably a nice way to put it. But it was, you know, I was, I was sure of our results, and if you go to the next, on September 10th, suddenly the flow stopped. And like, that had not happened before. So one of the things we were saying was, we hypothesized was, you know, the reason this was happening is because of the turbulence and the flow. And so if this is true, then they did, they helped us do one of the, I mean, I'm an atmospheric chemist, so I was. so I was like excited by the science. So if we're right, and you stop the flow, what happens to the hydrogen sulfide gas? Next slide. Huge effect. And so this just, it was like an amazing, real-world experiment. And one thing I want to point out is hydrogen sulfide is just one of, we've detected over 1,700 different gases in that air. So it's just, it's a red herring. You can smell it. Actually, right now, you can't, which is kind of bad, because all those other gases, a lot of them are still there, that are creating your headaches and all these other health problems that people are still experiencing. But this showed that, you know, our hypothesis of this hotspot, this flow, was correct. If you go to next. And the beach ended up opening for the first time in over 1,000, actually 1,300 days. Keep going, please. So this is my favorite, maybe my favorite figure of my entire career. This shows the hydrogen sulfide over time and those odor reports that San Diego Air Pollution Control District was collecting. And what you see is a near-perfect correlation, 0.92. One would be perfect. So this means that the community's voice is, the community, we're the best sensors we have. We need to listen to the community. And so, you know, okay, we come along as geeky scientists and measure the air. But it's one of the best moments of my career, of our careers, was being able to actually finally give data that made these people not feel like they were going a little, you know, crazy, imagining things or whatever. You know, this validated the community voice. Next slide, please. So, again, sort of from a happy perspective, a lot has happened. Again, I've been doing science my whole career, never seen anything like this as fast. And there are now those signs that I said about, you know, closing the beach. These are now warning you about the air. And that, you know, I don't know that there's sort of toxic air signs anywhere in the world. So this is something San Diego County, led by Supervisor Aguirre, could and should be proud of. So next slide, please. So this is just, I'm going to end with this, and then Paula has a comment. But these are the signs. They're both English and Spanish. This is what they're stating to warn the public, because that was always a concern. Public would just, you know, walk through there, birding, horseback riding, no idea. And so now, there is a warning for the public, which is a good, is a good thing. So Paula, do you want to comment on the public health?
Yeah. And, you know, thanks to Dr. Prather's groundbreaking research of tying the water to the air, now we're looking at the public health perspective of this. So we know people are breathing this. And we've launched surveys, along with our county health department that's here with us as well, APCD, putting in more monitors. So we've had things going. And these surveys that we're all doing are all saying the same thing. People are sick. They feel terrible. We have respiratory illnesses. We have headaches. We have sleepless nights, mental health issues. All of these things showed up in the county surveys, the CDC surveys, our SDSU public health surveys. And now we've actually statistically determined that people who smell the hydrogen sulfide smells regularly, like five times a week or more, are statistically significantly correlated with having exacerbated health problems. And so this is where we have to have more understanding of what are the health outcomes. And so an expanded epidemiological study, what we've done so far is just what we call hypothesis-driven. And that's just asking people to self-report. Now we have to tie it to the hospital data, to the clinic data, and we have to go door-to-door and ask people to help us with this understanding of how are they feeling, what are their symptoms, what are the doctors saying, and put it all together to understand how to do an intervention. Because this is chronic. It's not going away even if the river stops. People have been breathing this for a long time, and we're seeing chronic health impacts. And it's our duty, our responsibility, to understand how people are getting sick and what we can do to help them. Even if the river's still flowing, there's still things that we can do. So I think putting public health as the highest priority, taking care of this hotspot, doing a longer study to understand, again, these, these, data takes time, but I think there's things that we can do quickly to understand this a little bit better. So thank you. Appreciate you.
Folks, please, no clapping in the chamber. Thank you. You can twinkle.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a few additional...
Yeah, please. We'll turn it to my colleague to make any additional introductory comments. And then we'll have a chance for everyone to ask any questions before we break for lunch.
Okay, sounds good. So I just wanted to build on what was said about the river flow and, you know, Dr. Prather saying, we don't know why. We actually know why, because Mexico operates a pump station right before the river comes, well, the flow of wastewater comes across the border, which is not consistently turned on or off. That's why we need to tackle solutions here. Yes, continue to work in partnership with Mexico, continue to advocate across the border for solutions. But at the end of the day, we have a mandate and a responsibility to protect the public health of our constituents here in San Diego County. So I just wanted to say that. Obviously, our actions today, the expedited consideration of this item is extremely important because despite federal efforts and investments in infrastructure, we are not seeing on the day-to-day the relief that our constituents need. And just anecdotally, last, it was Monday. It was so hot at night, I turned on a portable AC that I have that, as you know, pulls air from outside, and I forgot to turn on my air filter at the same time. And I had a headache for a day and a half. And that hasn't happened, actually, since I started working here. I'm spending most of my days here in this building, and I'm not being exposed. I used to have chronic headaches every day, and just that one time, I didn't turn on my air filter. And privilege me, who can have an air filter. How many are not able to afford an air filter or haven't been able to access one? So that's what is at stake today. So what does this item do? First, it immediately initiates an epidemiological public health impact study, ensuring we fully document health impacts of chronic exposure to sewage and pollution so we can rapidly target resources and interventions where they are needed the most. We cannot navigate blind without data. It's equivalent to getting into an airplane and not checking your data and relying on someone telling you that the weather's nice and that it's fine to fly. Second, it launches a comprehensive economic impact study, quantifying the true economic toll on residents and businesses, which will strengthen our ability to secure additional federal and state support and ensure our recovery is swift and just. Third, it authorizes critical infrastructure planning, specifically funding a feasibility study for urgently-needed improvements at the Saturn Boulevard pollution hotspot, as was mentioned. This targeted action aims to reduce the toxic hydrogen sulfide emissions and other toxic gases that we still don't fully understand quickly and directly, improving the daily lives of our neighbor residents. Finally, it directs accelerated federal advocacy efforts, recognizing that permanent solutions require continued collaboration with federal partners and Mexico. With this focused approach, we ensure sustained national attention and resources for long-term infrastructure solutions. Yes, you will hear that the federal administration has expedited from 25 to 35 million gallons per day of wastewater treatment. But let me be very clear. The river, the wastewater flow, is not being captured neither by our international wastewater treatment plant in the US, nor by the Mexican plant, San Antonio de los Buenos. Nothing is capturing the wastewater flows coming through our communities on a daily basis. So in the meantime, that's why we need these urgent actions. Our residents deserve immediate progress, and this item provides a clear pathway toward delivering relief, protecting public health, and restoring quality of life in the South Bay communities. So I urge my colleagues to support this item. And with that, I turn it back over to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, we'll have time for public comment and robust board discussion on both of these items after lunch. But we do have our, our public presenters here. So if anyone on the board has comments related directly to the presentation or questions for our presenters, we'll do that now. Broader comments or conversations will be post-lunch. So in the queue, we have Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Hey, thank, great presentation. Excited to see it. And how it was turned off was quite phenomenal. But you had, you had, one of your slides showed, I guess, those pipes. And are those Tijuana River pipes? Are those runoff from the community? Were those pipes?
Those are the river. That's, so what happens on the other side of the road, if you were over there, it's like pretty quiet and calm. And I have over shots up from the top. But basically, on the other side of the river, there is no turbulence. It's just kind of flowing along, and then it gets forced through those pipes, and that is part of the river.
So this, okay, I guess I thought this was the river and the pipes joining, but you're saying the river has to go through those pipes to get there?
It's actually a culvert. So it's under, it gets it under, it's trying to get it under, and there's a lot of flooding that happens there, too. But it gets it under the road, under Saturn.
Okay. Because I was just curious if that was local runoff or what that was. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I, I think this is a fantastic presentation, great paper, so central to our mandate and our work here at the county to be protecting and fighting for public health. And I think I want to uplift what I see as some of the real value added by this study. First of all, is I think there has been questions, not clearly among the residents, but potential, you know, amongst sort of the scientific community as to whether the water quality was impacting the air quality. And I think your study made it very clear. And what was really, I think, fascinating, as you mentioned, really lucky, was that there was an exogenous shock in the middle of your data collection time period, where you were able to see sort of the immediate before and after variance. And, you know, I think the sort of causal identification is extremely strong, and that's very, very compelling. So lucky and good science, but, and lucky, like, as all good science is. So, but I thought that that was incredibly important contribution, because I do think it lays the groundwork for what my colleague is asking for in this board item, which is the next step, right? Now, and once we're clear that there's a, you know, a causal relationship between, you know, the air quality and the components of what's in the river, then we can begin really looking at what is the health impacts and the epidemiological impacts of air quality. And, you know, I, I think we're all continue to be really concerned and really focused on the health impacts of the water exposure. And that isn't, none of this is to sort of negate that or to push that aside, but to say that we have a both-and problem that's both about air quality and water quality. And if we're going to be really serious about a public health intervention, that really centers a comprehensive set of strategies to address the public health crisis that we're facing, we have to look at both the impacts of folks who are touching or near the water and the impact of folks who are, you know, just living in the community and breathing the air. And I think that's a game changer. So I just wanted to uplift my respect for your identification strategy and the, the impact that I think it'll make to our ability to move really meaningful public policy for our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think I could just add really quickly, really quickly. And I'm going to toot Dr. Prather's horn here. Her research for the papers at the coastline as well. I think we have to remember what you just made, a really good point about the water. Our beautiful coastlines, having those beaches closed, not just people getting in the water, but now we're concerned about people living near the water. And so I think that that's what your work has done. I just want to praise you for that. It's been, it's been a ride. But showing that water-to-air connection, and now attaching it to the public health outcomes, this is where we're at, and we've made a lot of progress since a year ago.
And I think, I want to sort of center something I feel like I've, has been really important to me over the last four years on this board, four and a half years, is absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. And when someone says to me, well, there's no evidence that it's a problem, I said, well, that's also, doesn't mean there's evidence it's not. And what we do as scientists and researchers is to have an open mind, you know, engage in hypotheses and acknowledge that just because we don't know something doesn't mean we know it's not true. And, you know, I think that that willingness to sort of engage in the inquiry and look for the data is what I hope we, as a board, can, can like embrace as we, I think, move towards a, hopefully, a very new approach to how we tackle the Tijuana River Valley crisis that's really based on science. Yeah.
Chair, just one, if no one else has questions or comments since you brought it up, isn't it correct that some of your preliminary findings have found that despite ocean current direction pushing some of these plumes and coastal waters up further north, aerosols have the ability to travel much greater distance? To your point, Dr. Granados, that you just made about coastal communities, can you speak to that as well?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we are continuing to look, and again, since all the supervisors are here, it is important to realize it's hitting everybody. Our paper actually shows the air goes up to Del Mar, probably beyond the water. We're now looking at where the water goes, this freshwater. We're tracking it with buoys. It gets way up the coast, and so we're trying to, so if it's getting, if, so the water is still like the conduit. It's almost like, our hypothesis right now, it's a hypothesis, is that the pollution can hide, almost hide in the water to make it further. Because if it was in the air, it would, a lot of it could react and change and whatever, which is not good either. But the point is, we think the water could be, we're now looking in, we're going further north to see just how far this water pollution is making, because then it hits the surface of, you know, the ocean. The trace gases get out, winds are prevailing to bring it back over land, and so it would be hitting people all up and down the coast. And that's what we're looking into now.
And that's true for pathogens, chemicals, other metals?
Correct. The trace gases in particular, they don't care about the surf zone. They will get out wherever they hit the surface. So that's going to let them get kind of everywhere, all the gases that we see. The aerosols, if, one thing we showed, previous work on bacteria and viruses and other, other biologic, the aerosols, is that they have to,